Okay, good morning. Welcome to the August 11th, 2020 Public Hearing, Public Meeting of the New York City Landmarks Preservation Commission. I will call the roll. Chair Carroll.
Here.
Commissioner Bland.
Here.
Commissioner Shamir Baron.
Here.
Commissioner Chapin.
Here.
Commissioner Chen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Devinger.
Here.
Commissioner Goldblum.
Here.
Commissioner Gustafson.
Here.
Commissioner Jefferson.
Yeah.
Commissioner Lefy. Commissioner Lefy, you're connecting to audio. Commissioner Lefy? You're on mute?
Here.
Thank you. And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Here.
Okay, all set.
And good morning, everyone, and welcome to the August 11th Public Hearing and Public Meeting. Today, we will be holding public hearings and public hearing and public meeting on those designations and public hearing items, and we will be hearing public hearing applications and public meeting items for the Preservation Department, which are the applications that come before us. And as a reminder, the, we take testimony during public hearings, and there is no testimony taken during public meetings, although we do receive and welcome written comments. And if you would like to watch the proceedings today, you may watch it on our live stream, our YouTube channel, or if you'd like to participate in the public hearing items, you can join our webinar at the estimated time that is posted on our agenda. And so with that, I will turn it over to Caitlin Lewis-McHale, the Director of Research, to start the public meeting of the research agenda.
Thank you, Sarah. Good morning, everyone. Item one this morning is LP 2647 East 25th Street Historic District, Brooklyn. The item proposed for the commission's calendar is the proposed East 25th Street Historic District consisting of the properties described within the boundaries in this presentation. Good morning. The proposed historic district is a remarkably cohesive group of 56 row houses built by a single developer, the Henry Meyer Building Company, between 1909 and 1912. All were built in the Renaissance Revival style and remain well-preserved. The proposed historic district extends along both sides of East 25th Street between Clarendon Road and Avenue D in Brooklyn's Flatbush neighborhood. In determining the boundaries of the proposed district, staff analyzed a broader area and concluded that this block stands out within its larger neighborhood context for its consistency and high level of historic integrity. Although its developer, Henry Meyer, also built row houses adjacent to the proposed district facing East 26th Street, those houses are of a different style and considerably less intact. This section of East 25th Street largely retains its character of a century ago. As shown on these maps, the proposed historic district owes its exceptional cohesiveness and strong sense of place to three major factors: its construction within a very short timeframe by a single developer, its architectural consistency entirely in the Renaissance Revival style, and its excellent historic integrity. All 56 houses in the proposed historic district remain well-preserved. Flatbush was initially its own town, developing separately from the city of Brooklyn until its annexation by Brooklyn in 1894. Although the Brooklyn Flatbush and Coney Island Railroad linked the neighborhood with downtown Brooklyn in 1878, Flatbush remained largely rural until the 1890s. This map shows the location of the proposed historic district in 1873 on what was still the Vanderweer Farm. It also shows the new Prospect Park to its north and west, which would be the focus of the neighborhood's early residential development. This was focused in the areas directly east and south of Prospect Park in the late 19th century, which were also convenient to the Brooklyn and Brighton Beach Railroad. Important early developments included sections of the Prospect Lefferts Gardens Historic District east of the park, the Prospect Park South Historic District with its opulent freestanding houses, and suburban developments further south, including Ditmuss Park, Fisk Terrace, and Midwood Park, all designated New York City Historic Districts begun by the early 20th century. While other areas of Flatbush were developing by 1905, the area of the proposed historic district shown here in red remains semi-rural, consisting mostly of wood-framed buildings scattered along an incomplete street grid. But within a few years, new transportation routes to and through the neighborhood spurred intensive development in the vicinity of East 25th Street. Major transportation improvements included the Nostrand Avenue Streetcar Line, five blocks east of the proposed district, which crossed the New Williamsburg Bridge to Manhattan in 1906. West of the proposed district, a substantial upgrade and expansion of the Brighton Railroad in 1908 brought it essentially to its present form as the city's B and Q subway lines, and was heralded as one of the great transportation highways of the metropolitan district. The Henry Meyer Company purchased the site of the proposed historic district in the spring of 1909. This property was part of the former farm outlined in blue, established by Cornelius Jans Van der Weer, soon after leaving Holland in 1659. In 1790, it belonged to his grandson, also named Cornelius, whose household consisted of five white males, five white females, and 10 enslaved people whose genders were not recorded. The farm was known to generations of Flatbush residents for its windmill shown here that reputedly sheltered African-Americans seeking refuge during the 1863 draft riots. The windmill was destroyed by fire in 1879, and by the 1890s Vanderweer descendants began selling off portions of the farm. Developer Henry Meyer was born in Germany around 1864 and immigrated to the United States while still in his teens. Starting in the 1890s, his firm constructed approximately 700 houses in the Cypress Hill section of Brooklyn's East New York neighborhood, illustrated here on the left. Possibly due to Meyer's membership in the Cortel U Club near East 25th Street, he ventured into the Flatbush market, and the earliest houses on East 25th Street were completed by the end of 1909. In a December 1909 advertisement, Meyer claimed, "We transformed East New York from a wilderness to a city. We are now operating in Flatbush and are going to duplicate our former success." Meyer's ads highlighted the area's excellent transit facilities, clubs, and schools, easy access to Brighton Beach and Coney Island, and the privacy that only a single-family house could offer. Modern features included parquet floors, up-to-date plumbing, laundry facilities, gas and electric fixtures, and oak and birch trim from the company's own mill. Meyer's East 25th Street houses were executed in the Renaissance Revival style, featuring limestone or brownstone fronts, full-height rounded or angled projecting bays, foliated keystones, and classically ornamented entrance surrounds and cornices. The two sides of East 25th Street are mirror images of each other. Unlike similar houses constructed elsewhere in Brooklyn at the time, which were constructed as more affordable two-family houses, these were built as single-family houses, reflecting Flatbush's affluent reputation. Although about a dozen of the houses are known to have been constructed with rooftop balustrades, they do not appear to have been built consistently across the block. Most houses did not have them at the time of the circa 1940 tax photos, as you can see a few here, and the balustrades themselves were not of uniform design. One house at 360 East 25th Street retains its original balustrade today. Following an economic downturn coinciding with their completion, many of the houses languished on the market. In 1912, the unsold homes were acquired by another Brooklyn developer, Realty Associates, which subsequently sold them off. Quote, "They were built too good to sell in the present slow times," end quote, Brooklyn Life reported. And rather than retail them at lower prices, Henry Meyer decided to sell them in bulk and get out of the building business for the present. This map from shortly after the proposed district was built gives a sense of its remarkable cohesiveness, which stands out in the surrounding area. This area's irregular street grid with short and angled streets and history of primarily small-scale development contributed to a diverse array of building types in both masonry and wood. Buildings tended to be individually or in small groups, making the long, unbroken rows of East 25th Street especially distinctive and make it really stand out in the neighborhood. During their early years, these houses were owned and occupied by the families of white merchants or other upper-middle-class professionals. In recent decades, their ownership has come to reflect Flatbush's increasing diversity and the growth of its African-American and Caribbean-American communities. Since 2004, this section of East 25th Street has won the Brooklyn Botanic Gardens Greenest Block in Brooklyn Contest four times, and earned several second- and third-place finishes and window box awards. The pride of the street's homeowners in their houses and street is evident, not only in the lush greenery of their front yards, but in the proposed district's outstanding historical integrity. The Research Department recommends the commission calendar this block of East 25th Street for consideration as a New York City Historic District. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. Commissioners, do we have any questions for Kate? On this item? Okay, not seeing any questions. I, you know, I just want to say that I've been out to the site, and as Kate has described, this block really does stand out in this neighborhood for its consistency, but also its integrity and the level of care and stewardship that has happened on this street has really been just remarkable for the buildings. And I'm very much excited to and looking forward to seeing this item move through the process. I do see some hands now, which is great. Commissioner Bland? Commissioner Bland?
Yes, I had to unmute. I was so glad that Kate mentioned the greenest block in Brooklyn from the Botanic Garden. I was very proud of this block winning several times and was knowledgeable about it. My question, though, is, on the map, and I think you mentioned this, but I wanted to clarify it to be sure, because on the map it made it clear that the block to the right, I'm not sure what direction that is, maybe north or east, also looked very consistent in plan, and I just, my question is, why not that block as well?
Yes, we did look at that block. It does show up on some historic maps. It was developed not quite as consistently. Some of those houses there are semi-detached, and the houses are built in shorter rows, so not as cohesive. But unfortunately, there have been a lot of alterations on that block, so that was the major consideration about, it didn't have the same intact historic character.
Right, and that is the block that you mentioned when you mentioned that? I just wasn't connecting your words with the map. Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, Commissioner Gustafson.
Yeah, I actually drove through the block just to see what it looked like, and it is amazingly consistent, and I understand the contrast between this and the block next to it. But my question is this: when I saw it, it struck me that it's the level of consistency that is, you know, it's absurdly high, and the quality of how people have taken care of the place is just incredible. So the question is this: how could it have taken this long for us to pick out this block? I mean, is there some reason that we didn't look at this sooner?
That is a good question, and no, I think we have come to this part of the, you know, we've done the districts on the other side of Flatbush, and now we're looking at this neighborhood, and we had looked at this block in the context of the broader neighborhood and did find how much it stood out, and it did come to us from residents. And so we've had a lot of great outreach and meetings with residents on the block to talk about it as well.
On that outreach, do we have a sort of a preliminary view of how much support landmarking has on that for that district?
Yes, when we received a request for valuation, there's been a petition, and we have had a good, we had our first virtual owner meeting where we talked about historic district designation in this Zoom setting. So I don't have specific numbers, but we have had good support so far.
Thank you.
The other questions? Oh, Commissioner Goldblum, please go ahead.
A question and a comment. Do we have any documentation about how the streetscape was handled? I mean, in this photograph, you can see that there is some variety with the fencing and the street edge.
In terms of historically?
Right.
We do have several historic photos that show gardens in kind of various levels of, I think originally, and Mike, maybe if you wanted to chime in if I'm getting this wrong, historic photos tend to show the yards extending to the sidewalk. So I think fences have probably come up since originally constructed, but as you can see, are really mostly in a historically appropriate metal and transparent.
Well, I'm just thinking about Queens and how a lot of times in some of the districts in Queens, the issue of fencing and streetscape, you know, the design from the sidewalk to the house becomes a really big issue. And the second thing, it kind of ties in, is I would just say that, per what John was just saying, if the outstanding quality of this new district, proposed district, is its uniformity, above and beyond perhaps, or even, you know, if that's what makes this different and unique as a place, and I think that that, maybe I didn't hear it, but maybe we would try to emphasize that a little bit more in the report so that when folks come to us to make modifications, you know, that uniformity is something that changes from district to district. If here that is the principal unique value of this location, I think that we should, that should be talked about in the designation report so that guides your applications.
And I think that will be made well-clear on the designation report, and thank you for thinking about sort of what happens after a designation and the impact that our deliberations and our report have on that. And in terms of the gardens in Queens, the one thing I would say is in those two districts, the districts were really designed as garden communities, where the gardens were really integral to the planning of those neighborhoods, and that's why the, and the intended open green space on the streetcape was a planned feature. And that's why we have taken a certain approach in those historic districts that we've not applied to other brownstone historic districts, even where the buildings didn't have fences originally. For example, the Prospect Lefferts Gardens Historic District, those row houses did not have fences originally, but, you know, over the years, of course, have started to have fences, and by the time of designation, had a lot of fences, and we have, as a commission, approved them as they have a more traditional rowhouse arrangement on the streetscape.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, great. So I would like to move that we calendar this for a public hearing in the near future. So I'd like to make that motion, and Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, great, and I am asking to unmute everybody at this point so that we can vote on that. Check your computers. Okay, and all in favor of calendaring this item? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, the item is calendared, and we'll hold a public hearing in the early fall. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Item number one, morning on the Research Department Public Hearing Agenda, is LP 2613, The Angel Guardian Home, at 6301 12th Avenue in Brooklyn, Block 5739, Lot 1 in Part. The item proposed for a public hearing is the proposed designation of an orphanage designed by George H. Streton in the Beaux-Arts style for the Sisters of Mercy and built in 1899. The Angel Guardian Home in Diker Heights, Brooklyn, was designed in 1897 by George H. Streton for the Sisters of Mercy, who operated it as an orphanage until the late 1970s. Prominently elevated on a raised lawn surrounded by a historic stone wall, the monumental Renaissance Revival and Beaux-Arts-style building is an enduring reminder of the role played by religious social service organizations in Brooklyn's early 20th century history and stands out within the surrounding low-scale residential streetscape. The proposed landmark site is located on 12th Avenue between 63rd and 64th Streets in Diker Heights, an area which, as you can see in our Discover NYC Landmarks map on the left, has no other landmarks. The proposed landmark site is a lot in part encompassing the footprint of the historic main building and its north and south wings, and the entire 12th Avenue frontage, including its front lawn and historic stone wall surrounding it. Historically, part of the town of New Utrecht, shown on the left in an 1873 atlas, the neighborhood of Diker Heights remained a sparsely developed suburb that was considered part of Long Island until it was annexed to the city of Brooklyn in 1894 and incorporated into Greater New York City in 1898. Diker Heights began to develop in the 1880s, when regularized blocks and lots were created. By this time, the Sisters of Mercy owned most of the block on which the orphanage sits. Shown in the 1890 map on the right, they began purchasing large tracts of land in the neighborhood in 1880. The Sisters of Mercy are a Catholic religious order founded in Ireland in 1831 by Catherine MacCalli, and as they expanded into England and then the United States, new convents followed rules established by MacCalli, taking vows of justice, no discrimination of race or class, and to be self-governing and self-sufficient. The Sisters arrived in New York in 1846 and opened their first orphanage on Second Avenue in Manhattan in 1860. They expanded their charitable activities in the city in response to an increase in New York's Catholic population in the late 1800s. They renovated their convent in Clinton Hill, Brooklyn, shown here on the left in the 19th century, opened a campus in Sayos at Long Island as an orphanage for boys, and from 1880 to 1892, acquired the large parcels of land in Diker Heights. In 1897, the Sisters of Mercy hired the architect George H. Streton to design the Angel Guardian Home on their Dikerite site facing 12th Avenue pictured on the right. This historic map on the left shows the site circa 1907, and the photo on the right shows the building circa 1920. At its opening in 1899, the Angel Guardian Home originally consisted of only the four-story main building, which was expanded by circa 1910 to include north and south wings containing a school, administrative functions, and a chapel. In addition to housing children waiting for adoption placement, by 1906, the Angel Guardian Home also offered a residence for unwed mothers. Behind the prominent main building, a nursery building was constructed on 63rd Street in 1907, and a boilerhouse and other utilitarian structures were also constructed on the site. And by the 1920s, the orphanage and its grounds were extended to encompass the entire block, surrounded by a stone and brick wall. The Angel Guardian Home was designed by George H. Streton, who was born in Brooklyn in 1864. After studying at Cooper Union and Cornell University, he embarked on a successful career as an ecclesiastical architect, working throughout New York City. Two of his buildings are located within historic districts: St. Joseph's Roman Catholic Church Rectory in the Greenwich Village Historic District, and St. Peter's Roman Catholic Church Rectory, shown here on the right, constructed in 1912 in the St. George New Brighton Historic District on Staten Island. The distinctive main building that housed the orphanage occupies a full-block front of 12th Avenue and consists of a central section rising four stories above a raised base with a three-story north wing that contained classrooms and offices, and a two-story chapel extension to the south. The design of the original central portion blended Renaissance Revival and Beaux-Arts-style elements, styles that were popular in use at the time to impart a sense of civic grandeur or civic purpose, and the wings were designed in the same blend of styles. The main building features a red brick facade with limestone trim, topped by a copper cornice and distinctive mensard roof. It is embellished with carved limestone door surrounds, coins, and stone arches and splayed lintels. The combination of its sophisticated architectural style with its monumental civic scale and elevated position set back from the street on an expansive lawn makes the Angel Guardian Home's main building highly prominent in the low-rise residential neighborhood and of primary significance within the site. The primary facade of the building faces 12th Avenue, which you can see here on the left. The side facades of the flanking wings face 63rd Street, shown on the left, and 64th on the right, and the rear facade faces into the site. The rear facade of the main building is less embellished than its 12th Avenue facade, and a tall brick chimney and several modest utilitarian extensions have been added over the years in addition to fire escapes. The Sisters of Mercy served the Diker Heights community for close to 120 years. Beginning in the 1960s, the Sisters broadened the focus of their social service work to include foster care, operating the orphanage through the 1970s, continuing to offer a residence for unwed mothers on the site, and providing senior assisted living. They sold the property in 2018, with deed restrictions stipulating certain uses to serve the community. The main building's prominence within the larger block derives from its architectural quality as well as its monumental scale, spanning the entire width of the block and elevated above the street on an expansive lawn surrounded by the historic stone wall. Designating it as an individual landmark would ensure the preservation of the primary building ensemble on the site, the land and historic stone wall characterizing its 12th Avenue frontage, and its historic prominence within the Diker Heights neighborhood. As was discussed when the commission calendared the Angel Guardian Home and its landmark site on June 30th, multiple uses are planned on other portions of this block, including a public school and residential development that will include affordable units. This new development is consistent with the deed restrictions placed on the sale by the Sisters of Mercy and will be low-scale, as you can see in these massing models, provided by the owner for your information. To ensure that the commission has some control over the portion of the development adjacent to the landmark, we were able to secure the owner's agreement to file a restrictive declaration that would make a portion of the lot abutting the main building subject to design and massing criteria. As you can see in the rendering on the right, the portion of the planned development abutting the landmark would be recessed from the 64th Street facade and substantially lower, and its materials and fenestration would relate to the main building. The draft design guidelines are intended to ensure that development in the zone adjacent to the proposed landmark is appropriate, too, and will not distract from the proposed individual landmark. The elegantly designed Angel Guardian Home, with its monumental civic scale and adept blend of Renaissance Revival and Beaux-Arts architectural details, is symbolic of the importance given to social services in the progressive era and of the role the Sisters of Mercy have played in Brooklyn for over a century. The distinctive and remarkably intact main building is prominent within the neighborhood of Diker Heights, and the Research Department recommends its designation as an individual landmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Kate. All right, this is a public hearing, so we have a number of, I think, people who want to speak on this item, but I just wanted to see if we had any questions before we turn to the public. Okay, so not seeing any questions. I will turn to our Executive Director, Lisa Crisavich, who will manage the public testimony. We will start with anyone who has signed up in advance, and if you're in the meeting and would like to speak, whether you've signed up or not, please raise your hand so we can identify you. Okay, Lisa?
Okay, and Kate, if you could advance to the next slide, please? There we go. And so, please do raise your hand, but we will be calling the people that signed up first, and we'll be bringing you in as a participant when you speak. So we're going to start with Councilmember Brennan, followed by Scott Barone, and then followed by Shelley Friedman. Okay, Councilmember Brennan? You just need to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
And turn on your camera if you choose. Yes, we can.
Okay, cool. Thank you so much. My name is Councilmember Justin Brennan. I represent the district just about a block outside. I represent the district just about a block outside of the Angel Guardian Home. I have submitted a letter to the commission, along with Assemblymember Peter Abadi and Senator Andrew Gennartis, and we are conveying our full support. But let me just summarize. We wholeheartedly endorse this designation in its present form. We are very grateful that the new owners of the site have been very, very transparent and cooperative in supporting this designation and have worked with local stakeholders the whole way, really, from day one. Saving the preeminent building on this site has been our objective from the first, and the first day, really, and this designation will hopefully seal that opportunity. So I would ask that you refer to my letter for further details, but again, on behalf of myself, Assemblyman Peter Abadi, and Senator Andrew Gennartis, we all support the designation in its present form. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember. So next, Scott Barone, followed by Shelley Friedman. And I should say too, please start by stating your name for the record.
Scott Barone of Barone Management, property owner. You hear me?
Okay, yes, we can hear you. Thanks, Scott.
Good. Don't really have a lot to say. I want to thank the commission, most notably the chair, for her and their assistance in a somewhat longer-than-anticipated but very friendly approach. It was always part of our mission from day one to preserve this building when we had gone into contract even prior to closing with the Sisters, were happy to be the owner of Diker Heights' first landmark. And I'd also obviously like to thank Councilman Brennan and Assemblymember Abadi and State Senator Gennartis for their support here as well, and we're happy to see this beautiful building remain exactly the way it's in that.
Great. Thank you, Scott. Okay, next we'll have Shelley Friedman, followed by John Silviano, and then followed by Yaciel Segal. I apologize if I mispronounced that. Okay, Shelley, just bringing you in. And Shelley, you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose.
There, are we good?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good morning, Commissioner Shelley Friedman, representing Barone Management. I want to state, bring you back to 2017, when we began this process. The Sisters of Mercy, who owned the site, the site is 140,000 square foot tax lot with two 700-foot frontages, but this building was the only building that was being used for any purposes whatsoever by the Sisters. They really could not put a plan together. Community was very concerned. Local elected officials were very concerned. Mr. Barone entered the scene in early 2018 and made three game-changing commitments. One, he agreed to a restrictive covenant that the Angel Guardian Home would continue to be used for community service. A second, he made a commitment to the community that he would support the designation of this building as a landmark. And third, he got to work on a plan for utilizing the rest of the site, and he and his investors and partners lined up a school under construction by the School Construction Authority and a housing development for the mid-block, which is now being developed by others to provide housing for the community. So with all that, we have worked cooperatively with the staff and the chair, and I will say that while I have given Mr. Barone and Mr. Silviano substantial credit for changing the game, none of this would have happened without the intense involvement of Chair Carroll and the senior staff, who have been very tolerant and patient with us, as Scott put all these pieces together. He's already indicated support for the designation, and we're hopeful to proceed along the basis that this building will be designated a landmark and continue in public service. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Shelley. John Silviano? I'm writing you to panelists. You just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose, and you'll be followed by Mr. Segal, Josephine. And I would just remind everybody, please state your name for the record in your three minutes.
Hi, good morning, everybody. This is John Silviano, part of Barone Management in the Ownership Group. I want to just thank everybody for taking the time today, and the folks that spoke on our behalf, I really appreciate it, and we're all in favor of the hard work that we've all put in over the past two years with landmarks to get to this point, and we are all in favor of landmarking this building, as we have discussed.
Great, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Mr. Segal, bringing you in now. You'll be followed by Josephine Beckman and Fran Vella-Maroni.
Hi, good morning. Do you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Hi, good morning, everybody. My name is Yaciel Segal. I'm one of the owners that's been under contract to purchase this historic, beautiful building in Diker Heights. Thank you, everybody, for taking your time and for being so involved in moving this forward. We as well look forward to work together with the LPC on successful adaptive reuse, as we're aiming to use this as a school building to serve the community in accordance with what the Sisters of Mercy have intended to use this for, and we definitely support the designation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. And Josephine, you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose, and you'll be followed by Fran Vella-Maroni, and then followed by Gregory Mango.
Hi, good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Great. My name is Josephine Beckman. I am the district manager representing Community Board 10. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the Landmarks Preservation Commission for calendaring, the Angel Guardian Home, the proposed designation of an orphanage designed by George Streaton, the Beaux-Arts style for the Sisters of Mercy. I'm delighted that this is the first prospective individual landmark in Diker Heights that's located within Community District 10. I did submit written testimony, but I wanted the members of the commission to know that the members of Community Board 10 voted unanimously in support of the application to designate the entirety of the complex back in February of 2018. The Angel Guardian Complex served the community so well for over one century, and members strongly asserted that this is vital, that the landmarking would be vital to preserve the importance of its architectural and cultural history. During our public meeting, members did really point out the uniqueness, the history, the social, cultural, and historical significance to the community. Community Board 10 Chair signed onto a joint letter with the applicant, as well as the Diker Heights Civic Association and City Councilmember Carlos Mencaca, to express our disappointment that the proposed landmark site carves out the convent building on 63rd Street. This building is also designed on the same high style as the main orphanage building, and we feel also deserves landmark protection. The convent building also has four design facades, including a striking copper bay on the rear elevation. We fear if it's not preserved, it will sadly be destroyed. But we do want to highlight and shine on that we're grateful for the opportunity to speak in support of this individual landmark of the Angel Guardian Home, and we also asked that you reconsider the inclusion of the convent building. My apologies. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, I want to call Fran Vella-Maroni. I just want to remind people, I'm going through the list of people who signed up. You could raise your hand if you want to speak, so I can identify you. I don't see, I'm wondering if Frances is Fran. I think she might be. Okay, Frances, I'm bringing you in. And you just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you, thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak to you today. My name is Fran Vella-Maroni. I'm the president of the Diker Heights Civic Association. I'd just like to reiterate actually what District Manager Beckman had said. A number of the issues she brought up were issues that we wanted to bring up. The Diker Heights Civic Association has been in support of this since the beginning. We've supported the residents that brought this application to you, and we continue to support, and we supported it from the position of the entire lot. And unfortunately, since then, pieces of the lot have been sold off and were left with two buildings, the main building and the convent building. We are very happy that you're considering the main building, where we appreciate the support that we have from the owners of the property in this regard, but we do want you to also consider the convent building as well. It's got the same architectural and historic value that the main building has, and we think that it should be considered as part of this package. Saying that, once again, we want to reiterate our support for this and make the point that this will be the only, the only landmark, individual landmark in Diker Heights. And really, there are rare landmark, individual landmarks in southwest Brooklyn, so this is important for a number of reasons. It's got architectural value, it's got historical value, but more importantly, we need to be recognized in our community, and this is one area that we can be recognized in for our historical significance. So once again, Diker Heights Civic Association is 100% behind us. However, we would like you to also consider the second building that's remaining, because we fear that it will be demolished if not, and we are consistent with the Community Board and with the local councilman, Councilman Mencaca, who signed onto a letter with us supporting the second building. So thank you for your consideration, and we look forward to landmarking this area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next, I wanted to call Gregory Mango, but I don't see him in here. And just if you're on the phone and you want to raise your hand to speak, please hit star nine, but I will come back to Gregory Mango, and next go to Karen Carlson. And Karen will be followed by Sylvia Rivera, and then Claudia Chiripa. Karen, you just need to unmute yourself? And turn on your camera if you choose? Okay, Karen Carlson, you just need to unmute yourself?
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can hear you. If you could just please state your name for the record, and then you have three minutes.
Sure, my name is Karen Carlson, and I am for the landmarking of Angel Guardian, but the both buildings. I was an employee at Angel Guardian Home beginning December 1st, 1986, to March of 2014. I had the privilege of starting out in the convent building, and in 1986, there was a border baby crisis in New York City where babies were being born to drug-addicted mothers, and the city opened up Shaliner Residence at the convent building, and we home 21 infants and toddlers. We worked in three shifts that lasted for three years, and when the governor decided at the time that children did not belong in what he considered a orphanage, so he wanted them all placed in foster care, and the residence lasted for three years. I then started working at 6301 12th Avenue, and I'd just like to give you a little information, like, the wall that surrounds the agency, that was built to keep the cows and the sheep from grazing, because back in those years, Angel Guardian started with Catherine Macaulay and seven little girls. So I can only tell you that's why the wall was built. The building is beautiful inside and out, and I think that with all the children that walked through those doors since the very beginning, I think the children need to see, have a place where they can go back and see where it all began, so they can be proud of an agency and how far they've come. So I hope that you decide to keep both buildings as a landmark, because when I come back to Brooklyn every couple of months, it will just break my heart to see those buildings no longer there. That's all I wanted to say.
Okay, thank you very much for your testimony. Next, I'm going to call Sylvia Rivera, and she'll be followed by Claudia, and then David
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was fortunate to not only look on the outside grounds of the Angel Guardian Home, but to have lived there as a child. So this is my testimony, that I speak not alone, as so many children, families, Sisters of Mercy, social workers, staff, seniors, and volunteers are connected with the Angel Guardian Home. I went to live in the Angel Guardian Home from infancy to 18 months. From there, I resided in two foster homes and went to live with my natural mother, but during that time, I continued to visit the Angel Guardian Home, seeking the love, comfort, guidance, and security they had given me. As the years passed, I journeyed on to achieve my own ambitions, landing a job with the New York City school system. Destiny was meant to be, as my lunch hours became my walks, visiting this historic beauty. Unfortunately, and with great fortune, the Angel Guardian Home was the only visual photo I had of my childhood, along with a three-and-a-half-page history of my foster life. Overlooking these tall iron gates was the safe haven I always treasured. To remember them always was to send my contribution, as I know it would help many children, families, and unwed mothers. As I go back in time, I hope you can envision the sprawling grounds, the architectural detail craftsmanship that built this main building and convent, all the people who resided there, the seniors, the seniors that are our... The seniors, the seniors that are our roots. The wisdom we learn from them, and our honor to enhance their dignity by providing them the services and activities they once had at the Angel Guardian Senior Center. Please let it be named as a historic landmark and not erased like a page omitted from history books, leaving so many others in an outrage, saying, "How could this not be a landmark? How could my walks end with not seeing my only visual childhood photo landmarked as the Angel Guardian Home?" So I really do hope that this remains a landmark, because until this day, I still go to visit there. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Next, I'm going to bring in Claudia. And just as a reminder, if you'd like to speak, please raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can do that by hitting star nine. And as a reminder too, please state your name for the record, and each person has three minutes to speak.
Hello, hi, I'm Claudia Schrepper, and I want to thank you for letting me speak. This is a very important day. As everyone knows, the Guardians of the Guardian has been advocating to landmark the Angel Guardian Home complex. As Fran had said, we wanted to advocate the whole property, but unfortunately, that didn't happen. When we first started this journey in landmarking the entire property, our vision was that we wanted the property to become a safe haven for seniors. We come into the world as children, and as we get older, seniors need love, support, and protection. Since these buildings represent a pillar of love and safety, we were hoping that it would provide the same for the seniors. Landmarking the main building, and also the sister building, is, to me and to the Guardians of the Guardian, considered one entity. Landmarking one over the other should not be in the equation. It is a complex. It should be both landmarked, both the one on 12th Avenue and the one on 63rd Street. The Sisters of Mercy, what they have, you know, what they wanted, what their vision was, taking care of the orphans, which they did, unwed mothers, which they did, families in need, which they did. And as I spoke to one of the seniors, one of the sisters who actually lived in the building, the 63rd Street building, she had told me that those buildings were to protect the people that were inside those buildings. And so we feel that both the Angel Guardian Home, the mother building, and the sister building, which is on 63rd Street, should both be landmarked. It shouldn't be one over the other. The two majestic buildings go hand in hand. Rooted in the legacy of mercy spanning more than a century, the building represents a safe haven for children, unwed mothers, sisters, and the seniors. Both buildings inspire hope and promote healing for children and families in need. The buildings may seem to be a separate entity, however, the connection between the two buildings are evident. There is access to each building via a shared rear space. The Sisters of Mercy intended the two buildings to be part of their whole vision. They share similar unique architectural styles not seen in other buildings in Brooklyn. The above characteristics echo the need for landmarking the entire complex, which includes the two buildings, the Angel Guardian Home and the sister building. I can go into describing what, they both have the copper roof, they both have, you know, if you can see both the buildings, they were built in pretty much the same time. So to take one over the other would be really not a good thing to landmark just one over the other. I really feel that that just won't do the community justice. It's obvious that the sister building belongs with the main building. These buildings were built with the intentions to keep it, you know, one in the same. To me, it's a mini-me, we're talking about the 63rd Street building, to me, it's a mini-me of the mother building. Now you want to create an orphanage of this building, and that's not right. Both buildings serve orphans, unwed mothers, and seniors. And I keep repeating that, because I think it's important to realize that both of these buildings are unique. And to tear one down just because it doesn't fit what the developer wants is not fair to these buildings. It's just not. These both, both buildings have a voice. Sisters of Mercy had...
Claudia, I'm sorry, your three minutes are well past. Could you please wrap up?
Okay, so basically, the bottom line is that legacy for the Sisters of Mercy should be carried on for centuries to come. Sisters of Mercy dedicated their lives and their buildings represent that, and to destroy them, you are doing a total injustice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Claudia. Okay, so there's three people that signed up to speak that I'm still happy to call, but I don't see you here. Gregory Mango, David Casato, and Carl Esposito. If you are here and you would like to speak, please just raise your hand. Oh, here's Gregory Mango. Mr. Mango, if you could just unmute yourself?
How's that?
Great, and you can turn on your camera, that's great, if you choose. But please just state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Sure. My name is Gregory Mango, that's M-A-N-G-O. I'm a product of Angel Guardian. I was adopted after 10 months being there in January of 1966, and I, you know, I'm not, I'm an amateur architecture buff, been, you know, studying Frank Lloyd Wright for many, many years, but I don't know all the specifics on this particular building. But what I do know is that the services they provide, I think, at that time period anyway, you know, was a unique situation to find good parents, which they did an amazing job. I also was interviewed for two articles in the Brooklyn Papers, one in 2016 and one in 2018. I did submit those articles as written testimony, it's a little more detail in terms of how, you know, my life developed after being adopted out of Angel Guardian. I hope you have those articles in the email that I sent, I think I sent it Friday night around 6:00 PM, so they should be somewhere in your records. But, yeah, I mean, they just went ahead and, you know, found two really good parents, also from Brooklyn. At that time, they were Italian parents, because they wanted to match the ethnicity. I don't know if they do that anymore. I think it's more of a free-for-all now. But, you know, I just couldn't have gotten better parents. They, we moved out to Long Island, I had a wonderful upbringing. And, you know, I can't say enough about Sisters of Mercy and the Catholic Charities, and I think it was Sister Mary Paul was the woman who found my parents for me. And I just think it was a unique time period in our country where these large orphanages were helping people to match up kids without parents. I, you know, I'm a photojournalist, I did work for the Brooklyn Papers for many years, that's why they knew I was from there. I also worked for the New York Post, and I did a story on the senior center at Angel Guardian probably about 15 years ago. And, you know, I just, it's hard to, it's hard to say, you know, how much I'm indebted, you know, to them for, you know, giving me a wonderful life. I mean, as a photojournalist, I've met a lot of homeless kids who, when they were eight, they bounced around foster home to foster home, and when they were 18, they would just let out, and they haven't been doing well since. So it would be wonderful for me to see the place landmarked as well, because it holds a special place in my heart, and it's really about all I can say right now.
Thank you very much for your testimony.
Sure.
Appreciate it.
Not a problem, you got it.
Okay, and then I see Carl Esposito here, so I'm going to bring you in. Okay, Mr. Esposito, you just need to, yeah, there you go, unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
Sure, my name is Carl Esposito. I'm a lifelong resident of 64th Street, actually, generations, my family goes back to the late 1800s in this surrounding area. I grew up right across the street from the Angel Guardian Home. My mom actually worked there for a while. We actually had a foster child, Joseph, that actually lived with us for a while. I know numerous people that worked there. My aunt also worked in the site office with the boys, and she would come in regularly and say it. So it is really steep in the community, the Angel Guardian Home. I remember as a young child, all the neighboring kids would come and gather around here. We would use that beautiful wall, we would draw a, you know, a strike box, and we would use that for stickball. We would use the points underneath, the beautiful slate points underneath across the street from off the wall. It was just a beautiful area. The wall, the whole area just signifies, we used to affectionately call it the home. And as you walked up the block years ago, there was also a beautiful garden on 64th Street that's now condos, and across the street on 12th Avenue, if anybody remembers, but there was also a playground where the orphans used to play. And there was a big Saint Bernard dog that used to watch them as they crossed the street. So these are the memories I had growing up around here when I was a child. Really good memories. And to start seeing everything just disappear, I mean, I guess you want to call it progress to see housing, that's right across the street from me. They're going to build a school on 13th Avenue, you know, I guess you need schools, I know a lot of the local politicians were pushing for that. But please, please, just try to keep those main buildings on 12th Avenue, also the one on 63rd Street, as part of what used to be Brooklyn, parts of Brooklyn that you just don't see anymore. If you're a baby boomer like myself, the parts of Brooklyn that were, you know, stickball days, and, you know, buck, buck, how many horns are up? Those days are gone. At least you could explain these things to your kids and your grandkids. And having the Angel Guardian Home there would probably remind a lot of people of those great old days growing up in Brooklyn. And I also want to say one other thing. I'm a little disappointed that the Guardians of the Guardians didn't get enough credit for getting this done. We were a ragtag group of local residents, about 10 of us, that banded together and really petitioned the local politicians and the Community Board to get this done. And we basically came from 64th Street, and Fran Vella-Murro and Claudia were big, they spearheaded this whole thing. So I'm a little disappointed that that wasn't brought up. It was because of this nice little ragtag group called the Guardians of the Guardian that all this got everything into motion. So I just wanted to state that before I, you know, just, my testimony is over. But then again, thank you, I appreciate you hearing me out, and please definitely consider the both buildings. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, I think that completes everybody that signed up in advance, so I'm going to go through the people that have their hands raised. I'll start with Simeon Bankoff, to be followed by Jeffrey Kressler. Okay, Simeon, just unmute yourself, please.
Sorry about that, Lisa. Hi, I'm Simeon Bankoff, Executive Director of the Historic Districts Council. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks. Oh, you can see me too, cool. HGC thanks the Commission for bringing this property forward today for consideration of landmark status. If all goes well, as mentioned, it will be the first designated building in Dyker Heights, Brooklyn. In 2018, the Guardians of the Guardian Committee Group submitted an RFE for the site after news of its sale was discovered. HGC supported their efforts and conducted additional research on the complex, which was submitted to landmark staff and shared with Community Board 10. As mentioned, the Angel Guardian Home's buildings were designed by George Streaton, a prolific architect of Catholic architecture in Brooklyn and Manhattan. The complex stretches from 12th to 13th avenues between 63rd and 64th streets, and has two of its original buildings extant from its opening in 1899. All the other structures and landscape features have been demolished since the building, since the property has been sold. Avenue-through-walled complexes like this are rare in New York City, with Visitation Academy in Bay Ridge being a similar example. Built in an ecclesiastical Bauhaus style, the buildings are designed in a polychromatic composition of red brick, limestone, and copper. Landmarks list the meritorious features of the building proposed today as ornate carved limestone door surrounds, corner coins, arched windows, copper cornices, and mansard roofs. All these features appear on the convent building, which is proposed to be carved out of the landmark site. This carve-out is unacceptable, as this building is designed in the same high style as the main orphanage building. Unlike the main building, which has utilitarian, rare elevation, the convent building has four facades of architectural expressions. The sheer presence of four design facades speaks directly to the architect's intended distinction of this building individually as part of the complex. Long a feature of the Dyker Heights neighborhood, the Angel Guardian Home, area residents has long been considered a lowercase landmark, as evidenced by my fellow speakers. Considering the quality, craftsmanship, and high integrity of the buildings alongside their cultural narrative, adoption, and social services in the 20th century, these buildings are more than deserving of official New York City landmark status, and we thank the Commission for addressing this and bringing them forward. However, we do urge you to include and designate the elegant structure that is not being considered the convent building. It will be destroyed if you do not act to expand the landmark site. And as a final comment, while we are pleased to hear that there are design-in-bolt guidelines, I can only point to St. John the Divine, where a similar situation happened, and that complex has been irretrievably altered from the community perspective and from the architectural perspective, looking at those guidelines as well. Thank you very much.
Lisa, you're muted.
Sorry, I was muted. Next will be Jeffrey Kressler, followed by Richard Kramer. And Jeffrey, just need to unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose.
I, oh, there I am.
Yep, and just please state your name for the record. Oops, you muted yourself again.
It's one or the other.
Just state your name for the record, please, and you have three minutes.
My name is Jeffrey Kressler. I am the Chair of the Preservation Committee of the City Club of New York. And yes, of course, we endorse the designation of the Angel Guardian Home. It's obvious, there's nothing else to say about it, but that's not the question really here. I find it puzzling that the LPC has carved out the convent building of the same vintage, same architecture, and pretty much the same condition. I see no reason historically, I see no reason architecturally, and no reason culturally why the other building does not merit designation. I can only consider one of two options. One, that the Landmarks Commission does not see that the convent building is worthy of designation. And the other option is that this is part of a deal, an arrangement, a compromise, a political arrangement with the developer, the elected officials, and the Commission. And frankly, between the question of whether it's a compromise arrangement, or whether it's invisible to the Commission that this merits designation, I don't know which one I would feel less comfortable about, because either one doesn't speak well for the Commission. So, yes, please designate what you have before you, and we all endorse it, but in the end, do not give yourself a pat on the back. Thank you very much.
Hey, thanks. Next is Linda Orlando, followed by Amy Dill Crater. Okay, Linda Orlando, just unmute yourself and turn on your camera if you choose.
Okay, I am unmuted, I believe.
Yes, you are. Please just state your name for the, yes, we can hear you. Please state your name for the record, and you have three minutes.
I only need one, thank you very much. This is Linda Orlando. I was a member of the Narrow Senior Center. It's in the basement of the convent. The building is absolutely beautiful. The convent building is beautiful. The walls seem to be 12 inches thick. Whoever built them, built the building to last. It's going to survive another 200 years. It is a magnificent, well-constructed, well-built building, beautiful. And we, the seniors, would have lunch in the cafeteria in the basement of that church, of that convent, every day. It does go with the building. It's structurally sound, and it should be landmarked with the convent, with the orphanage. It's part and parcel of the entire complex, and it should be landmarked, and it should be included in the landmark voting today. Thank you very much. Finished.
Okay, thank you. Okay, and then we have Amy Dill Crater. Okay, and then we have Amy Dill Crater.
It's gonna finish.
Hey, Amy. Please just, uh, unmute yourself, turn on your camera if you choose.
Okay.
And then you have three minutes. Please state your name for the record, too.
Sure. My name is Amy Crater. I'm an architectural historian at AKRF, and I'm here in support of landmarking the Angel Guardian Home. As is presented by ALPC, the large four-story Angel Guardian Home occupies a visually prominent site on 12th Avenue in Decker Heights. Over the past 120 years, the institution has maintained its significant role in the community with the Angel Guardian Home as its anchor on 12th Avenue. The landmarking of the Angel Guardian Home would ensure its continued physical and visual prominence in the neighborhood. The site of the Angel Guardian Home takes advantage of the change in elevation moving south from 12th Avenue. The building is raised above street level on each street frontage, including 12th Avenue and 63rd and 64th Streets. A perimeter fence and stone wall further contribute to the site's prominence on 12th Avenue. And views from 12th Avenue include the building's primary facade and its monumental entrance. The entrance has a prominent decorative stone surround with pilasters and capitals, a decorative stone cartouche above the doorway opening depicts a cross and an anchor, and a closed pediment supported by scrolled brackets with floral and fruit motifs and is topped with a stone cross. And as has been discussed, um, the Mercy Building, which is a smaller building of a smaller scale and at a lower elevation, is located on, uh, 63rd Street, just a three and a half story building. And yes, it was designed by the same architect as the Angel Guardian Home, but it is of a much smaller scale and presence in the community. The building was built in 1906 as a nursery for infants and to quarantine sick children living at the Angel Guardian Home. The building is faced in red brick with limestone detailing, has a mansard roof with dormer windows, and it has a copper-clad solarium on its rear facade. And yes, these are interesting features of the building. However, the building's presence on the, on 63rd Street does not compare to the presence of the 12th Avenue building of the Angel Guardian Home. The 63rd Street, uh, Street is a narrow side street and the building itself, Mercy Building, is set back from the sidewalk by approximately 25 feet beyond a paved yard. The entrance is at approximately the same elevation as the adjacent sidewalk with a small ramp that provides access to the entrance. And on top of that, the Mercy Building's primary entrance has been substantially altered. It originally had a two-story stone, or it currently has a two-story stone inframent with paired columns at the ground floor that are topped by a stone balcony and balustrade. Above the balconies, a paired window opening with a decorative stone surround topped by a broken pediment. The building's original entrance had a low six-step stoop that provided access to a raised first floor entrance. The stoop was flanked by low stone walls and the entrance had flat pilasters that flanked the double wooden doors. The original entrance's pediment and coining remain intact but are now at the Mercy Building's second floor. These substantial alterations to the Mercy Building's entrance were made in the mid 20th century. So in contrast to Angel Guardian Home, the Mercy Building is shorter and smaller, it's a much smaller scale and prominence. It fronts on a narrow side street, which limits its visibility from nearby vantage points. In addition, the Angel Guardian Home is at a higher elevation and which in itself obstructs views to the Mercy Building from 12th Avenue due in part to the Mercy Building's lower height and sighting. The Mercy Building has historically been and remains a secondary building to the Angel Guardian Home. The Angel Guardian Home was the first building built on the Sisters of Mercy property in 1897 to 1899. The building's raised elevations and its architectural features are largely intact. The building maintains a prominent position on 12th Avenue as the monumental face of an important civic institution in the community. The landmarking of the Angel Guardian Home honors both the history of the site and the institution. For these reasons, I fully support the landmarking of the Angel Guardian Home.
Lisa, you're muted.
I apologize. Yeah, sorry. Um, so thank you very much for your testimony. Um, I see two hands raised, but they're both as people that have spoken before already. So, um, we, um, only have people speak once, so I'm going to lower your hands. Um, and I don't see anybody else who has their hands raised that hasn't already spoken. I think that is the end of our testimony.
Okay, great. And Rich, did we receive additional written testimony?
Yes, we did receive a total of 71 letters in support. Yes, in support.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, everyone, for your testimony. Commissioners, do we have any final questions? Okay, great. I, I really want to thank everyone for participation today, both in person and testifying in person and also with your written submissions, which have all been shared with the commissioners. And we will consider it all. If anyone would like to submit any additional written comments, we will accept that as well. And after considering all of the testimony, we will, um, schedule a public meeting in the future to, uh, continue the process and move toward a vote. So thank you, everyone, for your participation and we'll, um, continue these conversations in the future. Thank you.
Sarah, do I vote to close?
Oh, yes. Sorry, excuse me. Okay. And I need to, I'd like to make a motion to close the hearing and Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
I second the motion.
Thank you. And I'm unmuting everybody, so please check your computer if you have to accept it, so we can call this vote. Okay, all in favor of closing the hearing, say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, the hearing is closed. But again, we will continue to accept written comments and we will, um, schedule a public meeting in the future. Thank you. Okay, and I think we'll take a few minutes as we switch from our research agenda to our preservation agenda. And I believe we are starting with, uh, public meeting items on the preservation agenda, which again are items that have already had a public hearing and for which the commission has already heard testimony and given their comments, and the applicants are coming back today with revisions in response to those comments. And so we'll be seeing those in just about five minutes or, or less.
Um, the applicants are ready, so we can begin.
Okay, thanks, Edith, and good morning, everyone. Uh, we're going to start today's preservation apartment agenda with public meeting item number one, LPC 20-08722, an application for a certificate of appropriateness in the borough of Manhattan, Block 738, plots one and eight, uh, 44 to 54 9th Avenue and 351 to 355 West 14th Street in the Gansburg Market Historic District. This is a row of Greek Revival-style row houses with stores built circa 1845 to 46 and a row of Greek Revival-style townhouses with stores built circa 1842 to 44. Application is to alter the facades and roofs, modify openings and replace windows, install a canopy and solar panels, demolish rear, uh, rear additions, and construct, uh, a new building slash addition. Uh, this was last presented at the public hearing on June 2nd, 2020. No action was taken that time. Uh, and please note that at that public hearing, some commissioners indicated potential support for visible addition on the site, while others, uh, others questioned the position of such an addition behind the small-scale row houses at this prominent intersection. Those who could support an addition felt that the height should be reduced. The commissioners also asked the applicants to re-study the design relationship of the addition to the row houses to vary the design of the storefronts, to retain more historic fabric at the exterior and party walls, and to restore more of the missing store features at the front and sides. Uh, the applicant team is here to present these revisions after we open the proceedings.
Thank you, Corey. So we'll need a motion to open the proceedings so they can, uh, present. Commissioner Chapin, would you make that motion?
So moved.
And Commissioner Jefferson, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, great. And I've, um, moving to unmute everybody again. So all in favor of opening the proceedings, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, so applicants may begin.
So you now have, uh, control of the presentation. If you could just please unmute yourself and state your name for the record and unmute.
Right, I'll start up. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is George Schieferdecker and I am with BKSK Architects. Uh, I'm assuming that everyone can hear me at this point.
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. I will be doing the bulk of the presenting along with my partner, Harry Kendall. Uh, I also have available Nick Silvers and Dove Barnett of Tabaro's Development, if you have questions for ownership. Thank you for taking the time to reconsider our revised proposal. Next. As I'm sure you recall, our project is at the intersection of 9th Avenue and 14th Street. The view you were looking at is from the southwest, standing at the recently created urban plaza area. Our site includes two historic buildings, the white, three and four-story slope-proof buildings that form the corner in the photograph. Both buildings are of significance to the Gansburg Market Historic District. Next. Our proposal is to restore the historic buildings and to add an infill addition entirely behind them. The historic buildings will remain as retail use on their street level and will be converted to office use on their upper floors. The infill addition will be office use above the ground floor with a rooftop terrace for use by the office tenants. Our previous proposal is shown on the left and our current proposal on the right. The primary thrust of the comments that were made by you of our previous proposal were in four categories. Number one, restoration, that our efforts at restoration had not left enough of the historic buildings in place, that we should bring back more of the oldest detailing of the buildings and that we should do more to clearly define one from the other. Two, scale, that our infill addition was too tall and though partially in and partially out of the district, could not rely on the out-of-district scale for its height. Three, materiality, that our infill addition did not relate to the historic foreground sufficiently and appeared alien to its placement. Four, siding, that our infill appeared to rise out of the center of the block in a way that was uncharacteristic of the historic district and the city at large. I'll begin with a brief summary of our response to each category of comment and then we will go into greater detail on each. Next. Restoration. Our overall approach has been revised to include substantially more restoration of the existing historic structures in place of tearing down and rebuilding. We wanted to continue to point out that what is important to the district with these historic structures is not only detail of their facades, but their three-dimensional presence in the urban context. To that end, we have always been mindful of keeping our infill addition completely in back of the volume of the historic structures in order to preserve that three-dimensional presence. The proposed revised restoration has also focused to a greater degree on elements of the two buildings that are distinct from each other. Next. Our revised restoration efforts have now extended to the rear of the historic buildings. We will be restoring the rear walls of the buildings as opposed to rebuilding them. We will be leaving the former party wall locations on all levels to a greater degree and preserving more of the historic fabric at the rear. We are also restoring the existing tiny irregularly shaped court at the joint of the two buildings. We will detail the full inventory of the changes to the restoration at the front and the rear in the latter part of the presentation. Next. Scale. Your comments were also directed towards the height of the infill, that our previous proposal was essentially too tall. We had argued that because our site straddled the Landmarks District border and our building was half in and half out of the district, it could take on the scale of the surrounding context. We do believe that that condition continues to merit consideration, but our current proposal reduces the perceived height of the building from 133 feet to 102 feet with a lower setback along 9th Avenue at 90 feet. We accomplished this by removing the original windscreen and cornice from the occupied roof terrace, removing a full floor and lowering the floor-to-floor height of the infill from 13 feet to 12 feet. Next. This puts the current proposal entirely within the scale of the district, lower than the immediate context to the north, the Porter House, and to the east, 345 West 14th Street, and lower than the allowable zoning height limit. The accompanying diagram of the district shows a range of building heights and stories with the lavender tone representing buildings from five to 10 stories and the gray buildings under five stories. It is useful to remember that the Porter House at 10 stories because of its cantilever is also part in and part out of the district and that the other two photographs not only represent taller buildings in the district, but the clear pattern of a disparity of scales within this range, cheek by jowl. Our proposed project is now an inventory of the building scales evident in the district at three, four, seven, and eight stories as shown in the inset. Next. Materiality. Your comments about the appearance of the previous proposal touched on its materiality, feeling foreign to the site and the foreground. It is clear that the decision to go with a steel and glass aesthetic also contributed to the perception of a building existing as an alien presence in the middle of the block. We have altered the materials of the current proposal to recall the historic masonry buildings of our foreground and the district and to simultaneously be contemporary in feel and aesthetic. We are proposing a terracotta framework with a matte glaze and a custom red model tone bracketed by brick lotline walls and core walls at the north and east. We have also brought the form of our building out to be in line with the 9th Avenue building so that, this 9th Avenue historic building, so that the direct relationship between historic and new is more clearly articulated. Next. We're going to be talking about siding and I'm going to ask my partner, Harry Kendall, to step in.
Hi, um, can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
And see me?
Well, we sort of are catching the
I can't, I can't see myself, but is that better?
Yeah, if you, it's a little bit better. You want, if you want to tilt, perfect.
Okay, great. So these, these next four pages, I'm Harry Kendall, also with BKSK Architects, as, as George said, making a presentation together. These next four pages are a brief digression, but an important one as we consider the, um, larger historic district development patterns. This is in response to the commissioners' concern that our proposal to, to build, to do an infill that encroached on what was called the, the, the donut was, um, you know, they questioned the appropriateness. So to further our thinking on this issue, um, we, we looked, we, we, we looked at larger district patterns and the, the next two sheets will focus on that. On, on the land use map to the left, in 1955, you see the, the, essentially the fully engaged district where there's very little donut in any of the blocks. This, again, this is 1955, but the, the density has only increased or some, some development proceeded since then and including since it's been districted. Now, so we asked ourselves, what, what do we see in this, in this block? We've outlined in yellow a number of through, through blocks, of which ours is one. And, um, some extend out of the, partially in, partially out of the district, as ours does. Most are within the district, but it's a distinctive pattern. It's, um, definitely got more through lots than you, you usually see in the city and, and much less donut. So we asked ourselves how this happened. The, the two maps on the upper band on the right are 1859 and 1895 respectively. And you can see, um, and one thing to note is that Washington Street was cut through between 1859 and 1895 so that the, the maps changed in that regard. But, um, you can see in 1859, not so long after our buildings were built, the streets, front of, um, nearby streets, you see the blocks we're looking at outlined in black on the left, were only sparsely defined and in fact, many structures happened in the middle of the block serving, um, industrial purposes. You can see by 1895, um, development has proceeded and the blocks are a very robust mix of composite buildings, through, through block buildings, back buildings, front buildings, and more importantly, buildings that have joined together to be, to make for a larger commercial structure, sometimes replaced by new buildings, sometimes preserving the old. The, the photographs down below show us that this pattern be, it begins in the, in the 19th century and continues unabated through, through the early part of the 20th century and, and up until now. In the course of this, some buildings have been lost, of course, like the second from the left. But this pattern of buildings extending, um, joining to next-door buildings and being, and ultimately in some cases being replaced by taller scale buildings is a little bit of a hidden pattern, but not so hidden in terms of the fact that it's resulted in the very visible juxtaposition of scales that, that we are referencing. I call your attention to the bottom right two images, the, the former garage structure- The, the former garage structure, one story, number 63 Gansville, Gansburg, functioned as a primary entrance to the automobile repair and other function building, in its back, the seven story building. So there is a precedent for a, a building, buildings being connected of very different scales with the lower scale serving as a, as a primary entrance for one function of, of the complex. The, the reason why the, the, the tax photo only shows a portion of that garage is because the tax photo only was taken from Little West 12th Street because it was one complex of buildings. Next, please. So we zoomed out and looked at some of the, some blocks a little bit further to the south, extending to the north, to the southwest corner with the Manhattan Refrigeration Block included. And you see this, this same pattern represented differently on each block, of course, but the, the transition of manufacturing space to, from the inside of the block out, from the outside of the block in, ultimately resulting by 1955 in a kind of even pattern of, of development throughout the block. We can zoom in on our, our site in, in specific, it like all the blocks has its different set of circumstances, but you can see that it began as residential, as did some of the blocks did. The, the undeveloped northwest corner of the block was, was the first introduction of commercial use and shown in the 1895 map. By 1905, the wine warehouse, now we, now known as the Porter House, changed the scale in, in, in the block and introduced a robust commercial use. And then you can see the buildings south of it were combining with rear buildings and stretching to the, to the back of their lot line. And you can see in 1921, our, that's, that's when our lot became a through lot stretching to Fourteenth Street. Ultimately, it, it, it became a lot that included the corner lot. And it was part of a ongoing pattern of development that you can see and in some cases not see throughout the district of, of buildings being repurposed and growing and connecting with, with back buildings. And, and throughout the district. So next, please. And we, we see, we would argue that what we're proposing as an infill building is a continuation of a pattern that lends a great deal of distinction to the Gansburg District itself now. Oops. You see Gansburg Row on the left, which, which now contains two and three story buildings restored, a two story portion recapturing its original height of five stories and a new building on, on the corner, which is stepping up, we think gracefully, to the taller 10 story scale of the Manhattan Refrigeration Company across Washington Street. The Samsung Building, which, which all of you know well, is, expresses the, the tension of the shifting of city grids in, in this block, something very evident in our block as well. And so it, it is a visible built response to a set of anomalous site conditions. Now, our block, color coded on the right, has a wealth of anomalous site conditions that we're able to respond to. It, it, it lies within and without the, the historic district and the line of the historic district runs right along the back of the Fourteenth Street four story former townhouse buildings, then turns north with pretty much no recognition of the original pattern of rear yards on the Ninth Avenue buildings and then excludes the corner of the Porter House, except for the portion that, that cantilevers into the district, providing a 10 story scale. We, we, of course, our site contains historically significant slope roof, three story and four story buildings. It also includes unprotected but very worthy three story building on, fronting on Fifteenth Street. And it includes a, an easement that was created, that's in the, in the bottom right, to, to further the development of a 11 story residential building to the east. So we have the opportunity to respond to this very complex set of historic conditions, regulatory conditions, and, and scales, which we, we think is a kind of worthy or even revelatory continuation of these, these patterns throughout the district. Next. And the, the scale that George was, George had touched on before, we now have an opportunity by, by reducing the height of our building, we do step up to both the portion of the Porter House that is within district and the, the other taller buildings on either side of us into the north that provide a very different scale, not unlike the southwest corner Manhattan Refrigeration Company buildings. And so George has already made this point, that we, we, we channel the, the range of scales that lie within the district. Next, and I return the presentation to George.
Thanks. For the next series of slides, we simply wanted to walk around our new proposal and show the changes from what we had proposed previously and what we are proposing now. In the view from the northwest, the use of the brick as an armature to the terracotta frame is evident. Also note the change in the orientation of the infill to align with the Ninth Avenue historic buildings and the setback of the massing to reduce the perceived scale above the lower of the two historic buildings. Next. The view from the urban plaza area at the intersection of Fourteenth Street and Ninth Avenue is where our infill is perhaps most visible. Please note the added details on the Ninth Avenue historic building of the balcony net and the shutters, as well as a different facade restoration of one building versus the other. Differentiation between the two historic buildings is much more evident. The terracotta fins forming the framework of the new infill are deep. And as the infill is perceived at an angle, they create a more continuous masonry presence. The roof bulkheads and penthouse space of the infill are dominative and well set back so as to be hardly in evidence. It is also important to note that almost all of the significant mechanical equipment for the project have been placed in an existing section of the building at the first floor rear, so that the infill will not have additional height from mechanical equipment placed on top. Next. The view from the southwest highlights the stepping up of scale at the edge of the district that we've been talking about. From our historic buildings to our infill, the Porter House, and then to the Google Building, the former Port Authority Freight Terminal in the background. Next. Directly across Fourteenth Street from the site, the reduction in scale of our infill is evident. The setback portion of the infill also recalls the two part massing and change of height of the historic buildings. And also evident in this view is the brick face of the core that wraps around the building to the north lot line in the first view and brackets the terracotta frame. Next. The terracotta frame is spaced at a standard five foot commercial office module and is supported outboard of the glass wall to a depth of one foot six inches from the glass. It will have probably three seams over the floor to floor height of 12 feet. Since the matte glazed terracotta is never a monolithic product coming out of the kiln, this will produce a slightly variegated texture from piece to piece that will add to its character and recall the handmade quality of the historic brickwork of the foreground and the district in a contemporary way. A soft gray metal span will contrast to the terracotta, as do a series of vertical metal fins of the same color that interrupt the rhythm of the terracotta frame. Those fins mark the party wall locations of the historic structures, the original townhouse divisions, as well as the column locations of the infill, which also follow the party wall locations, so that the old and the new merge in a subtle way. Next. The terracotta frame has vertical fins that are a consistent six inches wide and sections at right angles to the fins that start wider and, and narrower and eventually disappear as they, oh, as they go up the building. The effort is to begin with a denser masonry aesthetic and have that dissipate into a more contemporary open frame. This graduated aesthetic also shifts up a floor at the seam between the seven story portion of the infill and the eight story section, thereby recalling again the shift in scale of the historic buildings and the new architecture. Next. At the setback, the terracotta frame extends to just above the lower portion to give definition to its top. The metal of the interspersed vertical fins becomes a cornice line that ends the building, the eight story portion. Next. At the intersection of the terracotta frame with the lot line, the frame cuts back perpendicular to the slightly angled orientation of the Ninth Avenue facades. The lot line brick is given definition with recessed brick courses at the floor slabs and regular vertical metal reveals. On the right is the material palette of the infill. We have chosen a custom terracotta matte glaze that picks up on the brick tones of the historic buildings. And similarly, we have chosen a brick to bracket the terracotta framing that is variegated and again, recalling of the tones of the historic buildings, whitewash brick, the red brick and the original slate roof. To reiterate a point made earlier, the terracotta is a handmade product that will have a subtle irregularity of tone to its sections. Next. The following slides will discuss the extent of our proposed restoration and will highlight the changes made from the previous proposal. The photo at the left, taken in 1910, has served as a primary benchmark for our efforts at restoration. By comparison with the current condition shown on the right, the materials, roofscapes and overall three dimensional presence of the buildings has been completely lost. Please note the continuous roof surfaces, the presence of chimneys, the west facing end wall of the Fourteenth Street Building with its two attached chimneys, and the overall unpainted stucco brick exteriors, as well as numerous details that have been stripped off. Next. An important factor to remember about the two historic buildings of our site is that they underwent a complete gut of their interiors in the 1916 conversion from townhouses to commercial ground floors and rental units on the floors above. Exterior stoops and balconets, interior parlors, bedrooms, bathrooms, kitchens, fireplaces were ripped out and a multitude of individual apartments were created off a common corridor cut through all of the party walls between the former townhouses and now served by common egress and access stairs in completely different locations. As in much of this district, these buildings have undergone enormous change over their history. One of the basic rationales for our project is that these buildings are a marker, a record of substantial change. And that that change is ongoing in our time and a key, and a key characteristic of this district. New infill should be considered in that light, as well as the work of our restoration of the historic buildings. Next. Our previous proposal on the left included only the restoration and preservation of the front facades. These are axonometric views from the street. Our current proposal now includes, in addition, a substantial restoration preservation of almost all exterior elements, front and back, including the prominent west facing party wall of the Fourteenth Street Building and the rear walls of both buildings. We have also added rebuild reconstruction of more elements from the earliest era of these buildings.
May I add something?
Yep, please do.
I just want to make it crystal clear that we're, none of the sidewalls, front walls, of course, or rear walls will come down during this, the course of this project. The, the entire volume of the building, with the exception of the roof, George will talk about that, will be preserved in place and restored.
So it is important to note that the roofs and floor construction will be rebuilt to conform to fire code requirements. And a new armature of steel sections will be required to brace the historic construction for the restoration and to be able to bring it up to current seismic code. These are the elements that are shown in gray. Next. At the rear of the buildings, our additional proposed restoration measures are most evident. On the left are previous, previous proposal and on the right are current. The rear walls will be restored. We have kept existing window openings over most of the rear facade, where the upper floors of the restoration are joined to the new infill, existing window open, opening widths are maintained and only their sills are, are removed down to the floor. At every floor, party walls are restored for a distance into the interior. On the Ninth Avenue side, the ground floor spaces are made double height by the removal of a floor, but rear wall remnants are kept and again, party walls are preserved for a distance into the interior. Next. As I said, our touchstone for the restoration work is the 1910 photo from the northwest of the Ninth Avenue front and the overall roof scape of the two buildings. The images you see are marked to tabulate an inventory of the restoration elements at various levels of what is being restored, rebuilt or reinterpreted. We presented these elements previously and we have discussed them with staff. Our current proposal adds in the following elements. One, the continuous balcony net that was very idiosyncratic for a row of New York townhouses, even though it is part of an earlier era than the commercial storefronts. The shutters, number two, including the ones at the balcony nets full height windows. And number three, brick chimneys on the Fourteenth Street side where the party walls broke the roof plane. Next. We pointed out previously that the current treatment of the street walls of the two historic buildings are different. Ninth Avenue has a separate stucco facing on metal lap. Fourteenth Street is simply painted white. And that this could well lead to a different restoration treatment for each building as well and avoid an enforced continuity between them that never existed. Accentuating differences between the two buildings was something most commissioners indicated a preference for. Therefore, our current proposal restores the original red brick on the Ninth Avenue building and leaves the remnants of whitewashing on the Fourteenth Street Building. Next. We have not altered our treatment of the windows for each building from our previous proposal. We have added the balcony net, as previously mentioned, and are proposing a very utilitarian bar stock, black metal aesthetic can do a typical fire escape for their detailing. There is no evidence that they were very ornamental in the detailing, though that is hard to discern in the photograph. The shutters we are adding are wood, bifold and operable. The dimension between windows would indicate that in order to not overlap between windows, they would have had to been bifold. It is entirely possible that a future retailer might want to take advantage of this feature, which we think would be a plus. Next. We have not altered our treatment of the wall elements depicted on this page. Apropos of what was discussed in the previous slide, the cornice profiles will be restored differently for each building, which we believe to be historically accurate. Next. Our previous proposal had black metal interpretations of the chimney forms on both buildings. They were to be skylights for the upper floor space in both. Our current proposal substitutes brick chimneys not working on the Fourteenth Street side since the roof surface that was historically broken up by party wall copings, an element that we are rebuilding. It'd be more appropriate to add brick chimneys straddling those rebuilt party wall copings and further differentiate one building from the other as we, as we seek to recapture the historic roof scape. Next. Both roof decks and surfaces will have to be replaced for reasons of fire code. The diagram on the left indicates the degree to which the roofs of each building were in fact already rebuilt and modified over time. In addition, as we discussed at the previous hearing, the new local law would require us to put PV panels on the south facing and west facing slope roofs of the historic buildings. This requirement pertains whether or not we put PV panels in other locations of the project. So for instance, putting panels on the roof of the new infill would not relieve us of the requirement for putting PV panels on the slope roofs. The Landmarks Preservation Commission can waive this requirement for preservation purposes. We are showing two options for our project. At the bottom right, we are showing full compliance with PV panels on both historic roofs. At the top right, we are showing our preferred up, which puts PV panels on the higher roof of the Fourteenth Street Building and puts a slate roof surface on the Ninth Avenue side, where number one, the surface is more visible. Number two, the ability exists to better showcase the restoration of the original roof material. And number three, the energy harvest from the PV panels is less. The backsides of all the slope roofs are not subject to these, this regulation because they cannot produce enough energy if PV panels were put on them. The PV panels we have chosen will mimic the shingles pattern of slate, but will obviously be dramatically different in their glossy surface appearance. We hope the commission will waive the requirement for PV on the Ninth Avenue Building for the reasons we've stated. Next. Shown here is a material summary for the restoration. They include the two types of brick finishes, brownstone for sills and lintels, bluestone copings, lead coated copper flashings, the slate roofing material, the PV panel material, and colors for the windows and the metal trim elements. Next. The storefronts have been altered substantially over time. They themselves were not original to the buildings, also because of the removal of the substantial stoops on the Fourteenth Street side and the annexation of half of the basement levels for the ground floor retail. In the 1916 conversion, the scale of storefronts in the Fourteenth Street, street side, lower right photo has always been more substantial. Next. Townhouses on both buildings would have meant that the masonry would have continued down to the ground level. On the Ninth Avenue Building in our current proposal, we have chosen to recall that, that earlier history as an acknowledgement of the ambiguity of the historical record. In the middle is our previous proposal and at the bottom our current proposal. We are proposing to rebuild the like We are proposing to rebuild the likely masonry pier on both sides of the existing cast iron period. And to recall the spacing of the masonry at the ground level by aligning our storefront entries with the masonry piers above them. The presence of the balcony net is also from that earlier townhouse era and the new signage is proposed to exist underneath. Next. Our current proposal revises the approach to the ninth avenue storefront and leaves the approach to the fourteenth street ones as it was previously, middle image. A debate among you with our previous proposal centered around how much or how little of the variety and messiness of the existing storefronts messiness and quotes should remain. We believe everyone agreed as a baseline that differences between the two buildings were preferred. Our efforts have therefore been directed at selecting and including the unusual and special details from the historic records for each building, like the balcony net on the ninth avenue building and the unusual expansive masonry above the storefronts on the fourteen street side. Variety will naturally take hold with different and various retailers and will work its way into the overall architecture over time. Variety on the fourteen street side will also come with a placement of a contemporary canopy and entrance for the new office use on the upper floors and the infill building at the far right of the facade. Next. Shown here are the detailed sections for each storefront. Ninth Avenue on the left and fourteenth street on the right. Please note, as per our original proposal, the ledge on the interior of the ninth avenue storefront recalls the original second floor level and the newly created double height space behind it and is now extended out on the exterior to the level of the balcony net. On the fourteen street side, we have maintained the original angled position of the historic signage band. Next. Our proposed office use, usage represents another change in the history of these buildings. The infill portion of our proposal is treated in a contemporary aesthetic, as is the entrance lobby leading to the elevators. The expression of that contemporary aesthetic juxtaposed to the historic emerges at this entry point. These buildings, unlike many other buildings in the Gansburg Market District, never had the broad metal and glass canopies. Our proposed canopy is thus not about historical reference, but a sign of a new addition. The entry glass and metal have contemporary thin profile and deliberately contrast to the adjoining heavier wood sections of the historic storefront. Next. The next slides are about the interiors of our proposal. We have shortened this portion of our presentation considerably, but we do have it in its entirety in appendix number one. There are questions regarding details on the office floors. Generally speaking, as we have mentioned before, we have included in our current proposal a greater inventory of elements to be restored that recall and mark the previous primarily structural elements of the historic building, so party walls, rear walls and the odd shaped court space. This slide indicates the extent to which the ground floor has been altered over time, generally by means of new steel sections as shown in the photos. Please note that the existing conditions include commercial space extending to one hundred percent coverage of the site and even into the back portion of the site funding on fifteenth street. The aesthetic of steel supporting masonry is now well established as a marker of the changes these buildings have undergone. Next. This slide is a representation of the changes through time from the original townhouse configuration at the top left, the creation of commercial spaces in the early nineteen hundreds, top right. See the extension of those commercial spaces and the further erosion of the original townhouse elements in the present bottom left and to our proposed ground floor plan at the bottom right. On the left is what we had proposed previously and on the right is our current proposal with the plan at crown level. At the street level, at the street wall, the party walls restored or in some, number one, the differences are, I'm sorry, number one, at the street wall, the party wall restored. Or in some cases rebuilt, extend further, three feet, six inches into the spaces. At the rear wall, more of the rear wall is preserved in the juncture with the party wall and the party walls are preserved or rebuilt further into the interior, again, three foot, six inches. The party walls remain registered at the ceiling with steel supporting masonry. Number three, more of the very prominent west facing party wall of the fourteenth street building is left in place and specifically at the oddly shaped port above. Number four, that court is now marked with a skylight opening to it. Number five, the structure of the new building is kept separate from the historic, i.e. not integrated into it, but aligned with the historic party wall divisions and therefore, as it travels up into the new infill, will continue to mark the pattern of the original historic townhouses, as we've mentioned earlier. And number six, steel sections will be used to stabilize and reinforce the historic masonry walls to allow for restoration, code compliance seismic performance and a flexible layout. It is important to note that while we are creating an open space floor plan for the ground floor, the likelihood is that this will be substantially divided up into separate retail spaces. Whose configuration, we cannot predict at this point. Also, as we had taken pains to show in our earlier presentation, retailers will not necessarily leave exposed all historic elements and markers that we have left for them. The interior of the retail spaces will take on a vibrant diversity that is in the end, in keeping with the history of these buildings. Next. The upper floors of the infill, as they connect to the upper floors of the historic section, also evidenced a greater preservation of historic fabric in our current proposal. On the left is our previous proposal and on the right, our current proposal. The elements that have changed are as follows, number one. At the restored front wall, the party walls extending into the space are left in place to a greater dimension. Two, at the rear wall, virtually entire rear wall is preserved, the widths of existing openings kept and the party walls are restored to a greater dimension to the interior. Number three, at the very top floor of the fourteen street building, under the reconstructed brick chimneys, the party walls extending through the roofs supported by new steel. In both top floor spaces, this new steel registers the historic party wall locations. Number four, more of the very prominent west facing party wall of the fourteen street building is left in place and specifically at the oddly shaped court above. It is assumed that a future tenant will likely cut a new opening in that wall within the space. Number five, that court that we talked about is now preserved and becomes a light source for the office interiors and is featured at the juncture of the old and the new. Number six, the entirety of the infill is kept back of the historic buildings and the connections are reduced, leaving deep exterior reveals between new and old. Number seven, the structure of the new building aligned with the historic party wall divisions and continue to mark the pattern of the original historic townhouses. And number eight, steel sections will be used to stabilize and reinforce the historic masonry walls to allow for restoration, code compliance seismic performance and a flexible layout. Also, if you could just take note of the view from inside the office to the irregularly shaped court as a reference for our next slide. Next. We wanted to reiterate as we begin to close out our presentation that the juxtaposition of the old and new, the historic and the contemporary creates opportunities for a dynamic new architecture that we have tried to embrace at every turn on the interiors as well as on the exteriors. To that end, as one enters through the historic buildings to access the new office spaces, one encounters a skylight that looks up at the historic old rear wall. And similarly, as in this image, at the juncture of the new infill to the old historic on the second floor office space, the separation is delighted in and the views to the older regularly shaped courtyard are emphasized at the very end of the perspective view you see. Next. Previously, we had a more robust interaction of balcony spaces with the historic roof scape and our current proposal, we have backed away from that a bit to a single discreet balcony intervention on top of the former dormer location. The character of this district has embraced the use of spaces on top of buildings and at multiple levels. Our balcony and our setback take advantage of the historic views of our own building as well as of the district. Next. In conclusion. In our current proposal, we have added substantially more restoration of the historic buildings, including a more significant expression of the separate identities of each of our two buildings and a greater commitment to the restoration of the volumes. There are three dimensional presence within the urban setting, as well as the resonance of their bones on the interiors. We have reduced the height of our proposed infill substantially to where it is within the range and representative of building heights within the district. And we have given it a contemporary but contextual materiality. We have demonstrated how the historic patterns of development in the district parallel the development of our site and that the current proposed infill and behind the existing historic buildings is in keeping with those patterns. We believe that our proposal brings back to life a valuable historic artifact of the district in its restoration of the existing structures and adds a carefully designed, appropriately scaled and respectful infill building that reflects on many levels the cross currents of the urban context and the history and the character of its site at the edge of one of the most dynamic landmarks district in the city. That's our presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and we do have some questions. I'm going to start with Commissioner Goldblum.
All right. Okay, thank you very much for, as usual, a very rich and interesting presentation. Few questions. See if I can get my phone to work. There we go. It looked from one of the drawings like the balcony nets had no floor, that it was just kind of a fascia with a railing and no floor. Is that, did I miss something or is that, is that the intention?
No, that's not the intention. The intention is to have a bar stock flooring. You're looking at it sort of in section in elevation, so it would have a, you know, regular bar stock spacing.
Good, and in this view, on the fourteen, on the, on the ninth avenue buildings, are you adding those two windows on the third floor? Are those new windows? Or were they in an earlier version and they were filled in?
We believe that they are new windows. We have not found particularly evidence of them on the inside. However, obviously, these were townhouses, so it does seem appropriate that they might have been there. So yes, we are adding two windows on the third floor, the second and fourth windows from the left.
Right, and the shutters, are you getting the dimension of the shutters from the photos? Because they look a little skinny.
Well, again, what we did was we simply took the dimension between windows and assumed that if the shutters were open, that they would preference, desire not to have one hit the other. So we've decided that in order to keep them operable, that they probably were meant to be bifold shutters.
Oh, so they're like, they're bifolds, they're a quarter of the width of the window.
Correct, a quarter, yes.
Is that something that, that was done? I, I. Is that kind of a known thing on buildings of this, you know, when those shutters were put in?
I, I'm not sure of that. I can't speak to the history. It just feels that, you know, as we try to parse all the information on that very wonderful but somewhat dim photograph, we assumed that they had to be operable and would have, the people would have preferred to use them. So in order to not have one hit the other, that's the, the solution that seemed obvious to us. No, Commissioner Goldblum, it's not an invention. We have seen other bifold shutters in, in, in other historic buildings. We don't have evidence that these ones were bifold shutters, but if they weren't, they, they clashed. They didn't, they had to overlay each other and were, so, and, and the historic photo is, it's unclear. We cannot tell.
Right, last question, maybe more of a meta question. You made a, you know, you and the developer made a choice here to avoid doing any work or, you know, avoid impacting the fifteenth street building with the mass where you've chosen to put it. Can you explain to us, you've said a few times that the fifteenth street building is a lovely building, but BKSK Architects has a, has a storied and highly regarded history of doing rooftop additions to lovely older buildings. Why be shy here?
Well, this is meant to be a commercial development and that's a residential zone for starters. So that would be an entirely different building. And that certainly is something that, you know, in the past we've looked at, but it's a, that's, that would be a residential condo building probably entirely built within and outside of, within the residential and commercial district, but outside of Landmark's purview. We did talk about that the last time. We felt that we didn't need to cover it again, but we can certainly go back into that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Jefferson, please go ahead.
Oh, I just had two questions and intent. On the ninth avenue facade, we said you were, the ninth avenue facade and the fourteenth street facade are different. And as I see your building, I see you have a office building, a glass box, and then you have a screen that humiliates between the historic buildings and the new building. That screen is the question I have. The idea of the screen you said had to do with five foot modules based on office structures. So your idea was to make the fourteenth street facade have its own character, the ninth avenue facade have its own character. But this, this, the screen is, is a grid of just five feet and plus some kind of changes. My question is, if that was your idea, why not make the screen react to the facades? That's question one. And question two is the bulkhead, the core, which is very strong in this elevation and it, it somehow doesn't, kind of a nineteen fifty's building with a core that's different from the box. So what, what was your intent there? Should it be part of that screen or should it, why did you see it as separate from this?
Well, I guess, yeah. I guess in answer to your first question, you know, the fourteenth street and the ninth avenue buildings were different historically because they were probably built by different entities. Our building is being at this time, built at one time and we think it, we, we think it ought to cohere. And as an assemblage, it becomes the third part in a three part composition, but shouldn't be necessarily divided up into an additional two parts. We have as a secondary strain or theme through the new infill created references to the two buildings, i.e. where the setback, where the setback is located is right at the difference, the line between the old and the new historic buildings. And as I mentioned, the sort of interruption of the terracotta screen by metal fins that mark the party lines of the, the party walls of the historic buildings. In terms of the brick usage on, on the core, we thought it was an interesting thing to, to actually kind of grab the terracotta frame on its backside and, and as in this case, on its front side with a much more traditional material, i.e. the brick rendered in a contemporary way with, you know, a simple gridded form, but clearly secondary to the expression of the terracotta and then have that kind of evolve into the more contemporary expression of the terracotta framework. So the effort is to, to use that brick to relate more directly to the masonry heritage of our built, of our historic buildings and the district and have the terracotta framework sort of emerge from it. I should say that we, it's a, those are both very good questions and we explored changing the screen more substantially to reflect the difference between the shorter scale ninth avenue buildings and the one story taller fourteenth street buildings. It, it tended to be a distraction. As George said, we're adding a third element, not a, not really a third and fourth. And in that third element, we include a secondary reference to the stepping nature of the complex.
I could just add one more thing on that. There is this very utilitarian character to the district. And generally speaking, the buildings, when they were converted, sort of the, the conversion from townhouses to more utilitarian, commercial and residential above always spoke at least a little bit to the fact that those uses now occupy the building. So we felt it would be important that the new use on our infill would in fact reflect the, the building typology of, of an office building as it related to the district and, and our foreground. So we're doing a number of things with our infill.
Okay, and one last question, just quick one. On, on, on page, where you show the height of the building in relationship to the existing building. And I, I understand you're twelve to twelve foot ceiling heights. But in terms of the composition itself, you know, the, the, it, it, as we set back on ninth avenue, we set back floor back to make it appear somewhat smaller. On this view, we kept it flat. Did you consider moving this one, this cutting back the top floor, setting back for a balcony to make the composition not appear as tall? Or that was not, you did it on one side and not the other, so your question. So your question is, what was your intent there?
Well, we, obviously, we explored the massing a lot in, in various ways. And at the end of the day, we like this particular one very much because of that slight shift at the setback. And when, in exploring, we even looked at taking the very topmost floor and putting it on the orthogonal as opposed to angling it back on Ninth Avenue. Those kinds of things didn't really help the massing at all in our view. And so what we seized upon was this relating our building in what we think is a subtle way to the historic structures, i.e. the scale of 14th Street versus the scale of Ninth Avenue, and the, the fact that that kind of shift in the detailing also happens along that seam, not only, not only the height.
But thank you for your thoughtful answers. Very good, thanks.
Thanks for your questions.
Commissioner Lutfi, please go ahead.
Hi. Thanks for your very thorough presentation. I have a quick question about the retail signage. I can appreciate the, the applicants, the developers' desire to have, to maintain maximum flexibility in terms of the retail spaces. Because who knows what the market's going to be? And at any given time, over the years, things could change. But I'm assuming that we are looking at the maximum number of signs that could be here. Should there be, should each of these spaces be individual retail units? Is that correct? If two, if Magnus I and Magnus II were combined, and the same with the others, would there be just one sign for that unit? For each unit?
I, I'm not sure how to answer that. I, I think that you are, are correct in assuming that they, they represent the natural divisions that occur on the interior and on the facade. So we would assume that they do represent the maximum number of tenants. I, I think that, that any change in, in signage might have to come back before you. And, and I can't speak to any retailer not wanting to use the whole signage and then for continuous signage, I don't know.
Okay.
I, I think our assumption is that while we want to show something that feels orderly, you know, the buildings have a history, again, of messiness and, and that that's going to take hold, as it has in many of our other projects, when individual retailers bring their own aesthetic and their own ideas to bear.
But what is the, so what's the length of each of these? I, I know they're all different sizes, but if it were one unit, let's say Magnus I and Magnus II, what's, what's the full length of that unit?
I'm not going to be able to give.
It's 18 feet wide for each retail, each party wall spacing at Ninth Avenue and 24 feet wide at 14th Street.
Okay, that's great. All right.
And can I just ask the person who answered the question to state their name for the record?
Yep, this is Chongwei Li from BKSK Architects.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So if, if I think I heard this right, that the proposal is for this number of signage. There's no plan to reduce it if the tenancies get bigger spaces. And that if the tenants want additional signage, that would come back to the commission as separate applications.
I think that's correct, yes.
Okay, Commissioner Chapin?
I have two questions. One is about the treatment of the balcony and the other about the use of metal windows instead of wood frame or wood frame clad windows. When you just addressed how you see that in historic precedent, it looks like the balconies aren't entirely like or as, do not seem to reflect the historic balconies. Could you just address that and the use of the metal windows? Thank you.
Sure. I think in terms of the balcony railing, you know, we did make some assumptions that, that these townhouses were probably not sort of the, the most extravagant townhouses. And so we took a kind of utilitarian aesthetic to them. It's very hard to discern any detail in, in the existing photograph. We, we certainly would be amenable to, to, if we can find other photographs or other images of what that railing looked like. So we basically adopted a simple bar stock railing that obviously conforms to current standards for what railings have to be and apply to kind of upscale, fire-scale aesthetic to it, if you will. Or the other question was about though the windows and being metal. I think that the windows being metal on the upper floors is, is a strictly utilitarian consideration. We have agreed to, to copy and have the sections be historical in detailing and profiling. And to the extent we can determine that what that was, we're, we're happy to include that.
Thank you.
Rick Smith?
I had a question about the brick restoration. If you go to page 26. I'm not sure if this changed from the last presentation to this one. I think the slide is the same. You're indicating on the, on both facades that you plan to remove the face brick and reinstall it. But I'm just, I'm wondering on the 14th Street building, if it would be possible, since that building looks like it only has a light paint coating, if you could simply strip the paint in, in place and do the restoration in place?
The condition, what we're discussing here is the, the condition of the facing on, on, on both buildings. But the, the, the face brick on both buildings is separating from the backup brick. The backup brick is intact and in pretty good shape, but we will have to take apart the wall and, and put the face brick back to the, on, on, on both buildings because we will need to strengthen and, and make the structure sound. It is our intent basically to essentially leave, remove the paint and leave the, leave the kind of remnants of the whitewash on the brick. I'm sorry, to remove the paint to a, to a minor degree, but to leave the whitewash essentially as a marker of, of this particular era, but not completely. Does that answer your question?
So you feel that you have to take the face brick off both, all of the facades?
That's what our preservation consultant has been telling us, yes.
Okay.
Just separating from the backup brick. Then we have to reinforce it, put a new stainless ties, et cetera, et cetera.
And you can't do that by leaving the brick in place and anchoring, anchoring it from the face?
Well, you know, the, no, I don't, we don't think so. To, to, long and short, we've certainly tried to think hard about doing exactly that, but it's just not very easy unless you want.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, other questions? Not seeing any hands raised. While this is a public meeting item and there is no public testimony, we do, as I said earlier, welcome written comments on revised applications. So I'm going to just turn to Rich and see if we have received anything for this application. Rich?
Yes, we have received 25 letters in opposition, one letter in support, and Community Board four sent in additional comments also recommending denial of the application.
Okay, thank you. All right, so if there are no other questions, I think we will move to our discussion. So Commissioners, I'm going to start to unmute you and for some of you, you'll have to accept that. So look at your screens to do that. And, oops. Okay. So we're going to just start a discussion. There's a lot here. This was a very thorough and detailed presentation. So we've covered a lot and there's a lot to cover in your comments. But just to sort of give you a sort of a framework in which to put your comments. The last time we saw this proposal, the, there were sort of four or five areas that we asked the applicants to re-study. We've asked applicants to re-study the size and design of the new construction, both in its relationship with the historic buildings below as well as its relationship to the historic district, to re-study the approach to the restoration plan and the amount of removal of historic fabric. We re-studied the design of the storefronts to add some variety and reduce scale. And finally, there were also comments about the visibility and solar panels for the chimneys. So with that, why don't we start our discussion? And I think Fred, would you like to start this discussion?
I'm happy to. Am I muted? No, I'm not muted. Can we, can we have the, I guess, the frontispiece of the, the front major shot rather than this one? Kind of up on the screen? I also want to thank the applicant for really thorough and elegant presentation. And I want to.
If I could just interrupt for one minute, there is some background noise. So if everybody who's not a commissioner could mute themselves, that would be great. Okay, thanks, go ahead.
Good. Also, I want to just put this presentation in context. I've been a commissioner now. I think this will conclude my either 11th or 12th year. I forgot, 2008 to 2020. And I believe this is the presentation or the application that consists of the most number of moving parts that our commission deals with. It's an extraordinary and relatively small application, but it is incredibly comprehensive in what it's asking us to review and, and ultimately approve. So let me, let me, and I'm, I'm generally favorable. But let me break this down now into a few reasons. I actually wrote something down for the first time in a while. First of all, I want to just suggest that this block, while not unique at all, is certainly an unusual block in our city in that its lack of a donut, its small size and lack of a donut, and angled situation geometry makes it an unusual block. And it's not so apparent that this building, the new building, in my mind at least, grows out of a, of the back of these buildings. It, it is in fact, I see, I, I think, seen as part of a collage of buildings that surround it, up to, up to five different buildings in my counting. If you look at maybe the other angle, which I think is an even more conducive angle to look at. But yeah, that one. So I, I believe that the new massing now, rather than being the sore thumb that it was before, nestles in, settles in a, a series of up to five other buildings as a backdrop to the low, low-scale townhouses. So I, I think therefore that the bulk, which has now been suggested, is in my, in my view, appropriate. Could it be a slightly less? Could the floor, the floor be a little less? Yes, that would be good, but I think this is probably acceptable as it is. The architectural expression, I think I find now very interesting and appropriate. I think what was shown before was not at all appropriate, sticking out, as I said, like a sore thumb, just now nestles in. But it's not recessive. It's not, it's, it's not strong architecture. It's very strong architecture and beautifully rendered. And I think it's a, is a very, very elegant building. And I think the use of terracotta was a, was a terrific idea to use in this location. Finally, the level of restoration now employed in the scheme, I think approaches what we, we, we need and expected, expect to see. The retention of so much more of, of, of the fabric, et cetera, I think has been very well done. I'll leave it to others. I'm interested with, to hear others talk about the storefronts themselves. I think that's a very interesting concept, and I'm, I'm not sure I have a fully formed opinion on that. But nonetheless, I just want to, again, compliment. I think this is a really, really very interesting application. And in general, I, I am favorably disposed to it and think I can approve it more or less on the lines that it's been presented.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Thanks, thanks, Fred. And I actually, I'm going to echo a number of things that Fred said. I want to thank the applicants for, and I always truly appreciate it when applicants take what we say to heart, especially on a project that is very complex, which this one is. And on this round, I feel as though they have done a good job. Somebody's making a lot of noise back there. That they've done a good job of addressing many of our issues. I also agree that the, this change in massing works very well. Just bringing the height down and looking at the entire complex within the context of the taller buildings around, around it, I really appreciate the way it steps down and not only with, within the small tower, the shorter tower itself, but also in relationship to the porterhouse and the taller building behind. So there's a little bit of a rhythm here, which works nicely visually. And it's, I can feel the setback. So it's not just, you know, bursting out like a mushroom or, or a volcano. Now it's, it's, it feels setback. It feels a little more recessive, but the really lovely framing in the terracotta anchors it to the building, the building both on, from the Ninth Avenue perspective and also from the 14th perspective, not only from a coloration standpoint, but also from this sense of framing with fenestration in between. So it ties together quite nicely. I think that the, I agree that it seems as though the applicant has done a good job in terms of retaining and restoring as much as possible, especially given the fact that this building, these buildings have been significantly altered. In terms of the, I truly appreciate, in terms of materiality, what the texture of what, of the 14th Street side, I think it's quite elegant. And it, it sets the two different facades apart, but they clearly relate to each other, which I think is lovely. In terms of the storefront and my question about the signage, I'd like to say that, if, even if we're not discussing it right now, even if the applicant's not here about signage right now, I really do think that, that as storefronts, if storefronts are combined, we should have less signage, not more. They're not really that wide to begin with. And I, I think that each storefront could exist if they're combined with one sign per entity. I like the use of the. I like the use of the brick columns coming down at to the ground surrounding storefronts. I think it works better. It seemed in the last iteration that the top and the bottom of the building along, especially along Ninth Avenue, were too separate. And then finally, something that Commissioner Chapin had mentioned, I think it would be interesting to just take a look at working with staff at the balcony and whether or not this particular style of balcony is appropriate, or if there's something that might be more historically appropriate that could be there. So overall, I'm really pleased with where this stands. One more thing, in terms of the the solar panels, I don't have a problem with what the client, with the applicant had requested. So that's it.
Okay. And on the solar panels, just to be clear, they will have to put them, but under the code on both, on all of the buildings. They are seeking a essentially kind of denial from us for the lower buildings, which would allow them to move forward with seeking a waiver to just put them on the
So thank you for clarifying that. Actually, I was going to ask about the code issue. But so I actually think one of the questions is, is the system going to work effectively? If, if they remove it, and if it is, then I'm okay with the waiver. So it's about, you know, efficiency for me. I think the look and feel is okay.
Okay. Commissioner Jefferson?
Oh, this is such a complex and early worked out building. I mean, it's a design. My, my feeling is that it's, it makes for a very nice composition within itself. I think the, my critique, I guess, is the is the screen and how it's used. I think it's a great device to mediate between existing form and fabric with a glass box. And I love the way it's used on the street level. It's also a screen. And how they kind of try to manipulate the screen to create a spatial thing. But I I think it's fine. I wish it was a bit shorter formally, but I see where the issues are. Makes that difficult. I think the balcony, the screen coming up the balcony and then on the Fourteenth Street going all the way up. If the screen went all the way across at the same height, I would feel better in terms of the visual height of the new structure. I don't know if I'm being clear. But the screen defines a datum, and then on the Fourteenth Street, it goes all the way up to the roof. So if that datum was consistent, I would feel the building would be shorter and I could accept the height of the building. A lot of it is interpretation, which I can't argue with. So I find it acceptable.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Gustafson?
I agree with my fellow commissioners that this is a much improved proposal. I think it's almost there. You know, we have a, I think Fred raised the complexity issue and on top of the complexity of the proposal, you know, we have a location that, you know, in the 1850s was an extremely important location for one reason. And today, it's an extremely important location for an entirely different one. So you'll hear, I think that you've heard and you will hear, the commissioners sweating the details on this quite a bit. So on the various issues, let's start with the gratitude, which is to say they've solved the facadeism problem. And, and I think that, and I very much appreciate that. Second, to deal with the height, I, I still think it's, it's a floor or so too tall. And I say that, I think when they presented their justification, they addressed the building in the donut issue as, as a density issue. And, and I'm not really sure that I think of it that way. I think the the inappropriateness issue for me was about whether or not, or how much the building hovered over the, the buildings on both sides of it, how much it sort of loomed over them. And so I think it takes, it'll take a little bit more to stop that from happening, particularly on, if you look at the building from the Fourteenth Street side. And I say that because, you know, from this angle that we've got up there right now, it does actually sit back. But when you look at that Fourteenth Street side, as you know, the page 43, I think it's on, it looks almost as if this, the building is, the new building is, is actually some kind of rooftop addition on the existing. And I, and I think it needs some sort of work to get it to stop looking that way from that particular angle. Thank you for moving the slide there for me. So I would request that they consider reducing it a floor. The, on the, the basic, I guess, the storefronts on, on the Ninth Avenue side. And I think there's some detail work they can do there with, working with staff on the, on the piers and the, and the framing of the windows. The balconets, though, I do have a sort of a specific comment on, which is that, you know, I understand that the original balconets were not highly designed. But I think that the ones they're proposing are perhaps a little too utilitarian. And I don't, I think that's an easy fix. However, it looked originally, it really didn't look much like a Marriott courtyard. And so I think it's an easy fix to work with staff on making that without becoming ornate and attracting too much attention to, to improve the look of those balconets. On the solar panels, I, I, I agree completely with the applicant. They should, that we, the solar panels should be on the Fourteenth Street side only because they are, they are relatively invisible there. And, and I would, I would ask that there not be any solar panels on the Ninth Avenue side. That's it.
Thank you. Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I'm in agreement with a lot of comments about the new building and can approve it as presented at this point. I think I still have a problem with the Ninth Avenue storefronts and the way in which it's very sort of homogeneous, monolithic, both in terms of the signage, but also just in terms of the 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 sort of continuous and single articulation of, you know, canopies and, and the storefront system. So I'm actually not sure, though, how to how to make differentiation there. Because that's something that kind of occurred over time. And I'm concerned about whether or not I'm sort of nostalgic for that palimpsest of, of variety of different storefronts. But I do think that this is still a piece that that as it appears now in the presentation, is just too cute. It's too complete. And again, too homogeneous. So I'm hoping that there can be more work on that. And including, I'm not convinced about the brick piers. But otherwise, I think that they've, that the project has come an incredibly long way and been very responsive to a lot of our concerns. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Holford Smith?
Yeah, I have a lot of the same comments with my fellow commissioners, and I really want to thank the applicant for really listening to our comments and addressing them. And I think what they've come up with is a much better solution. I think that the, in general, the bulk of the addition is acceptable. I think that the new terracotta screen is much quieter and relates well to the existing building. But I really appreciated Commissioner Jefferson's suggestion that the, that the balcony on Ninth Avenue wrapped around Fourteenth Street. And I think, looking at this view, it would help to diminish the appearance of the overall bulk of the building. I would be in favor of potentially reducing it a floor, but I would go along with the majority of the commissioners on that. I think taking that, that line of the terracotta around the, the south would help in reducing the bulk. And the restoration, I appreciate the changes. I, I hope that the brick does not have to all be removed and reinstalled because that worries me, that it will not be reinstalled properly. But I trust that they will work with the, the preservation consultant to, to get that right. I did notice that there's some details that I think they could work with staff on, such as the cornice appears to have differentiation segmentation in it. In the original photos, they could work with staff to bring back. Same as the balcony net. I agree that it's too utilitarian at this point. I think that is probably an easy fix to make it a little bit more suitable. I'm also not convinced of the brick piers coming down. I don't think that they would have been that way originally. And I think the storefront, I agree with Adi, that it's still much too homogenized. And perhaps they could segment them by building, the original building division. Maybe not have the doors almost in location. I think it does look too, too uniform for this district. And also on my, sorry, on Fourteenth Street still, the repetition is not characteristic of this district at all. And the solar panels, I could approve the Fourteenth Street buildings having solar panels.
So you would support the request to have a waiver to not put them on the other side? Okay.
Yes.
Great. All right. And Commissioner Chapin?
Thank the applicant for thorough and thoughtful presentation. Often we see large buildings return, which are only reduced by a few feet. So I think this is a substantial reduction and that now the building seems to move back against the backdrop of the larger buildings. And possibly continuing the balcony along one side could help even further on, on the one side, as Commissioner Jefferson has suggested. But I think while the building has, you know, reduced its presence, it still has a presence. And as Commissioner Bland said, an elegant presence. And I, I personally do not think that it looms at this point. I think that it, it fits into the context appropriately with the other large buildings that are surrounding it. I think both the height and the relationship and the materials relationship, the terracotta and brick are much better. And the distracting diagonals that were on the original proposal have been removed. So I think that the, the building itself, the new building relates very well. I'm also pleased that the lot line and rear walls are mostly preserved, which is important preservation of historic fabric that we were all concerned about. And that the courtyard has, when somewhat preserved. I think that I agree with other commissioners that the storefronts really could use a little more variation, that, that the sort of homogeneous presentation currently is not really typical. And hopefully that could be worked out with the staff. Let's see what else. I think that the solar panels, I personally did not feel that they were that intrusive, and I'm generally in favor of the use of solar panels for energy conservation. So I think I could approve them in this case, as, as it was presented originally. So I think I've covered everything.
Okay, thank you. And Commissioner Goldblum?
Okay. I share my commissioner's admiration for the application, the applicant's detail and responsiveness, but I am, I'm afraid I'm not, I personally am not going to be able to support this as, as it's currently presented. Let me start with the restoration. I personally think that the removal, the wholesale removal of the party walls on the upper floors is not okay. I think that at least 50%, I mean, it's a number I'm somewhat arbitrarily suggesting, but I think that somewhere in the order of 50% of those party walls should stay. I think that an essential quality of the building is its composite nature and retaining that while allowing for flexibility of use does not necessarily require the wholesale removal of what looks to me like maybe 85 to 90% of those party walls. So I would ask that they be retained and on the first floor, where perhaps there is, there is already a lot of damage. I think that perhaps less of them could remain. But I think at least a quarter of what is there now, which is already a reduced amount, should stay. I think that the third floor windows on the Fourteenth Street building facing south should not be added. I think that it's characteristic of townhouses that are on corner locations from that period to have a more solid side facade from the front facade. And if that was the, we see that all the time in, in townhouses of a later vintage. So I think that that should remain. I think they should work with the staff on the shutters. I think the shutters are, are a bit peculiar. And if there's precedent that I'm just uneducated about it, I'll yield, but I, they just look odd to me. I have absolutely no problem with having the solar panels on the entire roof of both buildings. I think in terms of the differentiation, I agree with what many people have said. I would suggest that for the Fourteenth Street building, it looked to me from the photos that number one, there was more masonry at the facade in a consistent way. So one way to differentiate it might be to just simply have smaller openings and more brick hitting the ground, not a, not as part of a rhythm of peers. But, you know, just as more solid wall. And number two, I think that the approach of having a sign band in a different material than the, you know, is, is, is joining the Fourteenth Street building with the corner building. And I would suggest that they abandon the sign band and look at different ways of providing signage for the Fourteenth Street building. Either using canopies, which appeared on, on the historic images a number of times for that building, or simply using the very broad brick spandrel as a place to put signage, a pin mounted signage or directly attached. I think that would be preferable and it would enhance the differentiation between the between the two buildings. In terms of the, the building, the new building, I agree with everyone that it's, it's a much more attractive textual building that is much less aggressive. But I, I have to respectfully disagree with Harry's analysis of the site. And I still feel very strongly that morphologically, the notion of a large massive building rising from the mid-block is very anomalous. And it remains, I think, disturbing to me in its effect on these buildings and on its effect on the public space created by these buildings along Ninth Avenue. I, I just, I just don't think that the you know, there were plenty of through block buildings, including the refrigeration building, but it had its mass represented on the street and it went back as a block. And this particular area, you know, all the, all the examples of mid-block developments were from the south and west of this, which was a much more industrialized area surrounding the High Line, I think. Here, where you have this very precious grouping of, of federal period buildings, I just, you know, I just don't see the, the mass as being protective of the kind of historic the historic environment that they create. So I, and I don't think that they, that the building in its scale masses itself properly with the surrounding city, either with the porterhouse or the Google building, which form, which follow the rules of city development focused on streets and working inwards. I just, I can't support it.
Commissioner Devonshire?
The as much as I would like to congratulate the applicant for the new design of the infill building, I, I thought that the other one was so egregiously monstrous that I'm not sure that I'm just not sort of kidding myself that this is so much better. I, I agree with Um, I I agree with my colleagues who have indicated that one floor or less would be more appropriate. And I also think that it should move back further from the historic buildings. Can we have that image back again? Thank you. I, with regard to the storefronts, I I share Adi's um lamentation that with what's being created is a, it it's almost like a shopping mall monolith and I think that the applicant could work with the staff to to make it as vibrant as it is now. There is a mess on the street there and it's a, it's a great mess that has been formed over time. I'm I'm um I'm I'm not happy about the the monolithic quality of the new storefronts. The in in general, this is all a great improvement. I I agree with scenario A about the um the solar panels. I don't believe that they should be on the Ninth Avenue um roof. I believe they would be appropriate on the taller roofs. I agree with my colleagues' comments about the balcony net. That that could be a a less stark um construction. I'm I'm somewhat worried about the brick masonry on the Ninth Avenue building from the detailed image that we saw. It looks to be pressed brick with very thin joints. Um, in that period, the way that those bricks, the stretcher bond was keyed to the backup bricks was they would cut off corners of the facade brick and fit other bricks on a diagonal back into the other wides. And what that means is at least twenty percent of those face bricks aren't going to be able to be reused because they're going to have the corners cut off them. So will be paramount that the applicant works very closely with staff to make sure that the bricks that get replaced are replaced with a, with a, an exact match for um the Philadelphia press brick that they're they're trying to reuse. Um, I think that's it.
Thank you. And Commissioner Chen?
Yeah, I uh I share many of these suggestions of the fellow commissioners. I think they are excellent ones. I um, I think that um John used a good term, you know, the the commission wrestle a lot of times with what is called facade-ism. Uh, I like the idea that they have at least restore or or going to recreate the roof of the Ninth Avenue with the slate. I think uh, you know, here we have a choice between restoration or energy conservation. Uh, and I agree with a lot of comments about, I think on the Ninth Avenue side uh the the slate is the the appropriate way to go. And I, my concern is actually on the uh, on the uh the the Fourteenth Street side where the the PV panels will be too reflective. I I I I think the staff will will take a look at it. Um, as to the uh, I like Fred's suggestion about this mid-block uh juxtaposition of jigsaw puzzle uh has been brought down and I think is, the the word he uses, the correct word is nestled. But to further improve upon it, what the, what Commissioner Jefferson has suggested and what other commissioners have suggested is correct. Not only wrap the balcony around the Ninth Ave- uh, the Fourteenth Street facade, but the building should be pushed back on the top floor to set it back to sort of further reduce the bulk if possible. And I agree with many of the comments, especially and the Commissioner Holford Smith's comment about the brick pier coming down and the 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 bottom retail, I think is from the commissioner's comment is correct. It is too regular. Um, it needs to be further studied. It it looks monolithic. Um, and the this, the uh, the the signage issue, I think that requires further study. I also agree with the the comment about the balcony net. Um, the details could be further enhanced. Um, and the comment about the that brick uh in the, in the, in the attaching to the adjoining wall. I do not know what to do with it, but I do agree with the comment that if anything can be done to to further articulate it or or make it um less visible, uh, that should be a study. Uh, and but overall, I must say, compared to what was previously approved, uh, this is a refinement and I think that the um the um, you know, the 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 current proposal i- is is uh much better than last time.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you. Thank you all for your thoughtful comments on this. And I think, well, we've had a a number of uh co- different comments, but I think we do have a consensus for most of this work. And so um I'm going to go ahead and make a motion to approve with some modifications to uh to wrap the balcony around on the new construction and set the top floor back to uh restudy the bulk details at the balcony and the cornice, to restudy the details, materials and um rhythm of the storefronts to reduce scale and variety even further um and to explore retaining brick to the extent possible on uh Fourteenth Street and um and to limit the solar panels to the Fourteenth Street buildings. So I'll go ahead and make that motion and I think um
Tara, can I just make one uh observation before you?
Yes.
Uh, one thing that about the terracotta, uh, because the, I I do agree with the commissioner's comment, this will be interesting and the irregular uh from a practical matter, I'm a little, uh, the applicant may want to pay attention to the maintenance. I, my concern is, uh, we have seen too often the the pigeon nesting or the bird nesting and creating a mess of the uh the 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 building. And so even though it's not the preview, uh purview of the Lama Commission, I I I, when I look at it from practical level, I'm um, you know, the the pigeon may may find a nice home there.
Okay, all right, thank you. We'll definitely ask them to think about that. Okay, so I'm I'm going to make this motion and we'll see where we come out. Okay, in the matter of docket number LPC twenty zero eight seven two two forty-four to fifty-four Ninth Avenue in the Gansville Market Historic District. A a row of Greek Revival style row houses built with stores circa eighteen forty-five to forty-six and a row of Greek Revival style townhouses with stores built circa eighteen forty-two to forty-four. This is an application to alter the facades and roofs, modify openings, replace windows, install a canopy and solar panels, demolish rear yard additions and construct a new building. And I recommend approval with modifications, finding that the rear yard additions of the West Fourteenth Street and Ninth Avenue buildings are not significant features of the buildings or the historic district and that their removal will not eliminate any significant historic fabric. That the presence of a new building in the back of the lot, part of which falls outside of the historic district boundary, will be uh disassociated with the historic buildings and will blend in with the design and scale of the buildings in the surrounding streetscape just outside of the historic district. That the juxtaposition of taller buildings viewed over shorter buildings is common at the edges of this historic district and therefore the proposed new building will be in keeping with this condition of being a backdrop to the lower scale historic buildings. That the setback location and contemporary design of the new building will read as a separate modern structure apart from the restored row houses. That the metal terracotta and brick materials, red, black engraved finishes and rectilinear pattern of the proposed new building will contrast with the historic Greek Revival style row houses while recalling the canopies, rooftop signs and fire escapes found throughout the historic district as well as other contemporary buildings and additions within the district. That the use of brick cladding at the access tower and north facade will be typical of materials found at lotline walls and utilitarian structures throughout the district. And that the contemporary vocabulary of the new building will create a harmonious juxtaposition with the historic structures below. That the facades, roofs and interiors have undergone numerous alterations over time and much of the proposed exterior work at the front facades and roofs will restore or recall earlier historic conditions, enhancing the appearance of this ensemble of historic buildings. The portions of the uh party walls in close proximity to the front facades will be retained at the interior, maintaining the individual character of these attached row houses. That the removal and reconstruction of the outer wide of brick at the front facades of the historic buildings may be warranted by their deteriorated deteriorated conditions and the salvaged brick will be reused and reinstalled where feasible. That the design of the wood storefronts will uncover and incorporate historic cast iron piers and the uh materials, details and basic configuration of the storefronts will be in keeping with some of the historic storefronts. And that the design of the signage featuring a um projecting solid panel on the, at the West Fourteenth Street buildings and sign band at the Ninth Avenue buildings will be a modern interpretation of historic conditions above the storefront infill at these buildings as they evolved over time. That the simple design and at of the canopy and entrance infill at the West Fourteenth Street buildings will be in keeping with other contemporary canopies and entrances found throughout the historic district. That the lowering of the sills of the second floor windows at the Ninth Avenue buildings will be in keeping with significant later alterations to window openings often found at buildings of this type, style and age. That the rear facades of the historic buildings have been altered and feature plain brickwork and punched openings with no significant architectural features. Therefore, their reconstruction will not damage any significant features and will retain the original volume of the buildings. Uh, that the plane of the reconstructed rear facades will align with the historic plane and many of the punched openings will be retained at exposed portions of the facades, helping them to maintain the character and scale of individual row houses. That the larger openings at the rear facades will be limited to those locations where the historic buildings, historic buildings and the new building meet. That the removal of the modern dormers and recreation of the form of the prominent historic chimneys at the Ninth Avenue buildings and form and materials of the chim- chimneys at the West Fourteenth Street buildings will bring the buildings closer to their historic appearance. And the presence of solar shingles on the shallow pitched roofs of the Fourteenth Street buildings will 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 recall the pattern and appearance of historic roofing and will be minimally perceptible and will not detract from the buildings of this or the streetscape. However, I do uh find that the um addition, that the new building is uh still reads as an addition to the historic buildings from the Fourteenth Avenue facade and the design at the top is unresolved and therefore recommend that the balcony wraparound to the Fourteenth Street side and that the top floor be set back further from Fourteenth Street. Um, I would recommend that the applicants work with the staff on the details to refine the details of the cornice and the balconies on Ninth Avenue. Uh, that the applicants also work with the staff to refine the details and materiality, scale and variety of the storefronts at both buil- of both streets fronts. And that the solar panels be limited to the Fourteenth Street buildings. Okay, so with that, Commissioner Bland, would you second that motion?
All right.
Oops, I was just unmuting you and I muted you.
Second.
Thank you. Okay, Anthony, will you call the vote and and we'll see where we are?
Chair Carroll?
Aye.
Commissioner Bland?
Aye.
Commissioner Shemir Baron?
Aye.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Nay.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Luffy?
Aye.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
All right, so with nine in favor and two opposed, the motion passes.
That's approved with those modifications. Please continue to work with the staff to resolve all these uh final uh details. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you very much.
We'll move to the next public meeting item and then break for lunch.
The next uh meeting item is number two, LPC twenty dash zero four five zero one. An application for a certificate of appropriateness in the Borough Manhattan Block six forty-four lot fifty-six. Three Ninth Avenue, AKA forty-nine Gansville Street and fifty-one Gansville Street in the Gansville Market Historic District. This is a Greek Revival style row house built circa eighteen forty-nine and altered in eighteen eighty-seven as well as a stable building built in eighteen eighty-seven and altered in two thousand and eight. The application is to alter the facade and install new storefront infill and signage. This was last presented at the public hearing of February fourth, twenty twenty. No action was taken at that time.
Um, so the Commissioners will note that staff will be um going through what was previously presented and the applicant's revisions and the applicant is here for any questions that may come up afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Marcelo Pacheco, Preservation Staff. Uh, the item before you is three Ninth Avenue, which is located at the west side of Ninth Avenue between Little West Twelfth Street and Gansville Street in the Gansville Market Historic District. At the public hearing of February fourth, twenty twenty, the Commissioners reviewed a proposal to alter the facade by installing fluted marble cladding at the storefronts, installing new storefront infill within combined and modified openings and installing canopies and halo lit signage. Um, the uh renderings of that proposal are shown uh in the presentation today. Uh, most Commissioners expressed concerns that the proposed design would homogenize the ground floor, that the historic corner building would no longer read as separate from the modern infill building and that the overall design was not in keeping with the ad hoc quality of the historic district. Some Commissioners also expressed concerns about the proposed signage at the second floor. The Commissioners requested that the design be revised to better distinguish the historic corner building from the modern building, to retain masonry at the historic corner building, to restudy the, to restudy the storefront cladding material and to reduce signage. In response to these comments, the applicants have the applicants have uh returned with revisions to the design. These specific revisions include at the corner building retaining existing masonry and installing new storefront infill within existing openings in lieu of cladding the facade and combining uh and enlarging openings. Installing awnings and paneled transoms in lieu of metal canopies and revising the signage to omit the halo lit sign at the second floor and include halo lit signs at the transom and metal blade sign. At the modern building uh to the left, which I'll uh go to the next page has a better view. Um, installing new storefront infill within the existing openings in lieu of combining and enlarging the openings, installing red brown metal panel cladding in lieu of fluted marble cladding and sta- installing awnings in lieu of continuous metal canopy uh and retaining the existing metal rooftop guardrail in lieu of installing a new metal guardrail. This page shows some more comparative rendering views showing the changes to the design. The applicants are here to answer any questions regarding these revisions.
Commissioners, do we have any questions? Okay, Commissioner Goldblum?
Yeah, um, I just need a little bit more help on understanding what the metal panel is. What is it? It's called kummel, K U M M E L. Um, do you have a close up of it or has it got a texture, finish, joints?
Um, Martino, if you'd like to um unmute yourself and just address that comment.
Okay.
The chair can open the proceedings.
Yeah, we'll open the proceedings. Okay, so um Commissioner Goldblum, will you make a motion to open the proceedings?
I will make a motion to open the proceedings.
Thank you. Commissioner Chapin, would you second that motion?
Aye.
All right. Second, okay, all in favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, applicant may answer the question.
Martino, I see you're unmuted, but if you could, you can speak and just uh state your name for the record as well. So we're not able to hear you unfortunately. Marcello, can you maybe go to a detailed slide of the panel material?
So this shows the section at the modern building being re being clad with the metal siding. I don't know that we have a closer photo to that.
Okay, I bet the applicant's trying to put in headphones to see if he can just answer the question specific to the materiality itself. Just give him a minute. Okay. He seems to be having some technical difficulties. I don't know if we'll be able to answer that question.
Okay.
Okay, but Marcello, can you just again explain where those metal panels are on the rendering, just so?
Yeah, absolutely. So on the left, you see the previous proposal with the fluted cladding. On the right, you see the current proposal that shows in this sort of round finish, the metal, the metal cladding that will occur at the modern building only and doesn't extend into the storefront. That is the revision.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, other questions?
Can you guys hear me?
Oh, we can hear you now. Would you like to answer the question about the metal?
I'm sorry, Commissioner, I'm having issues here, different setup. Just to, you know, to reply to the Commissioner's question, the kummel is just a paint finish. It's not a matter, it's just going to be a luminous storefront to replace the existing luminous storefront with the kummel color, which is just a, you know, a pound ton. It's just a color finish.
Oh, so the metal panels are remaining or existing?
No, we're going to replace existing aluminum metal panels with new aluminum metal panels in a different color finish instead of gray that's existing right now. The color is going to be the kummel, which is this close to the terracotta finish, like a brick finish kind of.
Okay.
So like, is it one of those ribbed aluminum tongue, not tongue and groove, but kind of interlocking systems or is it like sheets like a lukavon?
It will be metal panels. There will be different sheets. Like if you look to the left side of the storefront, there are probably going to be a three three sections of three metal panels instead of bunch like a shiplet like it is right now. So instead of have a many different, you know, aluminum boards, we're going to have like three and probably, you know, space like three or four on the top and another three coming down on the on the right side of that window.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, and Anthony, did we receive any written comments from this item?
We did not receive any new written comments.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I think we are probably ready to move to our discussion. So why don't we start? And Commissioner Goldblum, since you had a question on this, do you want to go ahead and start this discussion?
I mean, I think it's generally much, much better. I think it's approvable as is. I think that they work with the staff in terms of the finish and the joints, which don't appear to be shown at least on here. It looks you know, appropriately crafted to a historic district and not cheap and crappy. I also think that there might be a little bit too much signage. The signage at the edge of the canopy and on the street and on the sign band and on the on the blade sign, maybe they reduce the amount of signage by removing maybe the canopy edge signage, which just seems like.
On the skirt, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, and Commissioner Devonshire?
I agree with Commissioner Goldblum about the signage and I think the awnings skirt signs should go, but otherwise it's approvable.
Okay, Commissioner Chen?
I agree.
Commissioner Bland?
Yeah, much better and I can approve it.
Commissioner Lutfi?
You know, although I think it's better, I actually still feel like it doesn't connect to the district at all. I still feel like this is especially with the awnings. And I don't know, the look and feel still feels like it would be in some suburban setting, so I don't think I could approve it.
Commissioner Jefferson?
I I I worry about this planting strip, especially where you see the new building. We're going to understand where the new, the new building hits the the new storefront hits the new building because of the planting strip that goes all the way down. Is there a joint there? That's a question I was going to ask. I didn't get to ask it. I think it's approved.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Yeah, I agree with Commissioner Goldblum.
Okay, Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I, there's something kind of strange about the the material, that what they're trying to do is use this very particular laurel piano brown color. And it might seem like we're confusing, we might, it might be confused for some kind of match with brick or something, but it's not that. The laurel piano brown is 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 a graphic brown, it's a box brown, it's a paper brown, and I don't know that it necessarily will be a successful sort of facade material. Metal painted quality. And so I think I might have wanted either for us to return to the previous design of the contemporary building or a new design for the contemporary building because right now it's replicating the laurel piano box. And I think that's a little bit odd for a building. Unless it's very, unless that really is the intention and it's the kind of it's the brand intention here and and we understand it as that. So I'm struggling a little bit with the with the new, the new material from facade. But maybe if others feel that it's all right, I can go along and approve it, but have a little struggle with it.
Commissioner Holford Smith?
Well, I think it's a big improvement over the previous proposal. I do think there's too much signage though, especially at the corner building. And they have three, three halo lit signs and the transoms. I think that could be reduced. Maybe just to one one location would be the one that's facing 9th Avenue. And I I I understand what Audrey's saying about the color. It is an odd. To me, it looks like they're trying to sort of match the brick, but if they're trying to match their own branding, it might not be a be successful. It might just look off and clash in with the brick. That could be a staff level review.
And Commissioner Chapin?
Yeah, I think it's in general a good redesign in terms of the bulk and the way it's put put together now so that it appears, I know to relate well to the exist, much better to the existing building and was responsive to our comments. I also think the signage is excessive. And, you know, I think there should only be one halo lit sign. I would think it would be over the entrance actually. But the entrance door, I think the blade sign is okay. The sign over the large awning is also appropriate, I think. So I would just eliminate the other halo lit signs. As another Commissioner suggested, as I said, I'd be inclined to have that be over the entrance, but if they wanted on the other side, I guess that would be okay.
Okay, great. All right, so I think we have a consensus here to approve this application with the condition that they reduce the overall amount of signage and there have been a few different suggestions here about how to do that. And that also working in consultation with the staff, they refine the color of the painted metal panels. So Commissioner Goldblum, if you can support that second recommendation on the color, would you make the motion?
Regarding regarding 3 9th Avenue, also known as 49 Gansford Street and 51 Gansford Street in the Gansford Market Historic District, the application is to alter the facade and install a new storefront infill and signage. I note the building style, materials and details are among the features that contribute to the special architectural and historic character of the Gansford Market Historic District. I further note that 3 9th Avenue was reduced and with by one bay on the south end in 1887 when Gansford Street was widened. I recommend approval with modifications. I know that the replacing of the storefront cladding will in and infill at the one story modern building facing Gansford Street. And storefront infill at the historic row house will not eliminate any significant historic features of the building. That the metal cladding will serve to distinguish modern buildings from historic row house and that red brown finish will be in keeping with the color palette of other altered buildings within the district that which feature metal cladding and storefront infill. At the proposed storefront infill featuring large metal and glass display windows and doors will be of a simple design in keeping with the evolving commercial character of the streets, streetscape and not call undue attention to itself. Now, the work will not detract from the special architectural and historic character of the Gansford Market Historic District. I recommend though that the applicant work with the staff to reduce the amount of signage either by removing the the signage on the canopy skirts or reduction of the halo lit signs on the building or some combination thereof. And that the applicant work with staff on the color and detailing of the metal panels.
Okay, Commissioner Holford Smith, would you second that motion?
Second.
Okay, and Anthony, will you call the vote?
Yes. Chair Carroll?
I.
Commissioner Bland?
I.
Commissioner Shamir Baron?
I.
Commissioner Chapin?
Aye.
Commissioner Chen?
Aye.
Commissioner Devonshire?
Aye.
Commissioner Goldblum?
Aye.
Commissioner Gustafson?
Aye.
Commissioner Jefferson?
Aye.
Commissioner Lutfi?
Nay.
And Commissioner Holford Smith?
Aye.
All right, so with 10 in favor and one opposed, the motion passes.
Okay, so that's approved with those modifications. So please continue to work with the staff to finalize your proposal. And that concludes our morning session. We will now break for lunch and we will return at 1:30. So Commissioners, you just need to turn your camera and your volume off and any members of the public who are in the meeting should exit the meeting at this time while we break for lunch. And you can re-enter at 1:30 when we return. Thank you all.
Thank you.